Information on how to watch, attend, and participate, as well as agendas, minutes, and recordings can be found on Broomfield's website at broomfield.org/councilmeetings. Public comment is welcome in person or through our call-in service, and instructions for calling are available on the council meeting's webpage. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first one through 15 participants in the queue have three minutes to speak. The next 16 through 25 have two minutes, and if time remains, the next 26-plus participants have one minute to speak. For those who wish to make public comment in person on item 7C related to the Trails of Westlake, there is a sign-up sheet located in the lobby. That list, along with a list of those calling in, will be used to determine the order of the speakers. We'll hear from six in-person individuals, then one on the phone if we have it, until we hit these limits. Priority will be given to those who indicated they are Broomfield residents on the sign-up sheet. Non-residents will have a chance to speak if time remains after our Broomfield residents have made their comments. Visit our broomfield.org/councilmeetings webpage for step-by-step instructions on how to use the call-in service. For our Heart of Hearing residents present, we have wireless headsets available in the back of the council chambers through our AV team. The City Council Regular Meeting is called to order. Councilmember Leslie is attending remotely, and there are 10 councilmembers in attendance. A quorum of the council is present. We begin this meeting by acknowledging that we gather on the ancestral and unceded lands of the Arapaho-Chayanne-ute and other Native peoples. Indigenous peoples have cared for this land for generations and continue to maintain deep cultural and spiritual ties to it. As the city and county of Broomfield, we recognize the responsibility to honor this legacy and the enduring presence of our Native communities. May this acknowledgement inspire action that fosters greater understanding, truth, and respect for Indigenous peoples. Will everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask councilmembers to limit their comments to five minutes. We'll begin with council's review and approval. I missed that, sorry. Five minutes. If councilmembers are given an opportunity to speak a second time, they must limit their comments to two minutes. We'll plan on a 10-minute break at approximately 8:00 PM. We'll begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Does any member of the council have any questions or comments regarding this evening's agenda? Are there any objections to this agenda being approved? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. For our first item, under petitions and communications this evening, we'd like to take this opportunity to announce that the 2026 proposed operating and capital budgets are now available on the Finance Department's website at broomfield.org/finance. This includes the proposed 2026 budgets for the city and county of Broomfield, the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority, and the Arista Local Improvement District. There are several opportunities for residents to review and provide feedback on the proposed 2026 budget, including four meeting opportunities. The first meetings are study sessions on September 18th and 25th. Public comment will be taken at both of these study sessions. Then a public hearing of the proposed budgets will be held during the October 14th council meeting. And finally, council will vote on the proposed budgets during the October 28th council meeting. In addition to the opportunity to provide public comment during council meetings, residents may also submit comments via the website or email budget@broomfield.org through October 13th. We hope you will join us for this important conversation. Next, we have information about the upcoming Broomfield Days and an invitation to council and residents to join the celebration. Council has a copy of the Agenda Memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and councilmembers. I'm Jenny Morgan, Broomfield's community events coordinator. I'm excited to be here tonight, as I would like to extend an invitation to the Broomfield Days 2025 event, which takes place on Saturday, September 20th. This annual celebration is eagerly anticipated by the community. This year's theme and winning logo is "City with a Heart," designed by Jaclyn Colby. This event is a massive undertaking, not just for us and recreation as the organizers, but for everyone we collaborate with. That includes public works, parks, streets, police, communications, public help, North Metro Fire, and more. We truly appreciate all their hard work and contributions in making this event a big success. Broomfield Days festivities kick off at 8:00 AM on Friday, September 19th, with the Broomfield Days Golf Tournament at Eagle Trace Golf Course, presented by the Senior Resources Board. After the golf tournament, you can relax and head over to the Girl Scout Shelter at Midway Park at 7:00 PM to play a little bingo with the Rotary Club of Broomfield Crossing. Saturday morning, the Rotary Club is back bright and early, making delicious pancakes for all of us to enjoy, beginning at 7:00 AM. At 8:20, we have the Mayor's Cup, 5K race, and one-mile fun run down Midway Boulevard. Thank you, Mayor, for kicking off the race again.
Of course.
The parade is the centerpiece of the festival, and every year, council is in the parade. We ask you to meet at the float, located at Main Street and Midway, by 8:45 AM. If you will be attending any of the events in the park before the parade, we just ask that we can provide a shuttle ride for you, but be back early, by 8:30, to the reviewing stage, so we can get you back to the float in time for the parade. Our parade marshal this year is Mike Lutz, who will be joined by Taylor Schelsta. In choosing the grand marshal this year, the community nominated and voted for several incredible community members, all of whom have made significant contributions to Broomfield over the years. Michael Lutz has spent his life serving the community with a rich background in civic planning and a deep understanding of community infrastructure. He has brought thoughtfulness, efficiency, and heart to his work at Broomfield Fish for the past 15 years. He is a past recipient of the Heart of Broomfield Award, and we are honored to have him at this year's grand marshal. Guests who have accessibility needs will appreciate the ADA golf cart rides up and down Midway Boulevard. Guests can catch a ride from the accessible parking area in the Garden Center, and the shuttles will be running all day long. Performances on the demonstration stage will be beginning at 11:00 AM on the north side of the park, along with the Illuminaire Ariel Group on the performance stage. Those looking to clown around for the Optimist's Club Annual Clown Contest will find the fun on the demonstration stage on the north side of Midway Park from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Whether you are a master of mirth or just love a little silliness, it's your chance to shine on stage. Registration will begin at 10:15, just to the west of the stage for all participants, eager to juggle some laughs, paint on a smile, or just show off their clowning talents. Big shoes are welcomed, but not required. For our music lovers, Global Sound Studio students will kick off entertainment on the main stage at 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. School of Rock will keep the tunes flowing from 1:10 PM to 2:30. And at 3:00 PM, you can enjoy Jacob Larson Band, who will wow the crowd with his incredible voice. Other spectacular lineups for the day include: The 31st Annual SRB Broomfield Days Car Show, which will showcase over 100 cars. Proceeds of this event will go towards supporting the essential programs and services by the Senior Resource Board. The 16th Annual Bow Wow Broomfield will feature the National Doc Dogs Competition, promising thrilling stunts and heartwarming moments. We'll have an array of 100 arts and crafts and resale vendors, offering unique and fun items. We'll also feature around 50 nonprofit organizations to engage with, and plenty of food and activity vendors to indulge in diverse food and experiences. Thanks to our partners at the Broomfield Chamber of Commerce, we will also have about 100 trade fair vendors. The Chamber will also be hosting the beer sales at the event, working with some of the local brewery favorites. Overall, there will be over 300 vendors spread throughout Midway Park for the community to enjoy. After exploring the park to meet with our vendors, stop by the Returning Electric Vehicle and Electric Bike Showcase, where you can get up close, check them out, and ask many questions. The Electric Vehicle Showcase will also be along, cold just north of Midway, and the Electric Bike Showcase will be in the middle of Midway after the parade. And last but not least, we have our Zero Waste Initiative at Broomfield Days, which we are very proud of. There are up to 19 green zone stations throughout the event. It takes about 150 volunteers to staff these stations, so if you know someone or if you yourself are interested, please contact me, and I will help them get signed up. And of course, you can close your night with more bingo at the Girl Scout Shelter with the Rotary Club of Broomfield Crossing at 6:00 PM, which is an earlier time than previous years. That's our overview of this year's Broomfield Days, and we're looking forward to a fantastic event again this year. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much for the little sample of what's to come. I know we're very excited. We do allow public comment on every agenda item, so if anyone would like to speak on this topic, now's the time. Do we have anybody online? On the callers? No? Okay. Any council questions or comments on the Broomfield Days plan? Everybody got their marching orders? All right, well, we'll look forward to it, and thank you in advance for all of the work that goes into this for our community. Thank you again. All right. I want to invite all of y'all to Broomfield Days, September 20th. The final item, under petitions and communications this evening, is an update from Adams 12 Five Star Schools regarding their ballot initiative. Will the representatives from Adams 12 Five Star Schools please come to the podium and share your update?
Thank you so much, city leaders, for giving us this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Chris Kadowski. I'm the Superintendent for the Adams 12 Five Star Schools. I'm joined tonight by one of my bosses, Lori Goldstein, who's the President of the Board of Education. I will likely do play-by-play. Lori will likely do some color commentary along the way or answer some questions. In terms of getting to the slide deck, I know that we've shared a slide deck with you. I'm looking to Jennifer and others for some help. Is there somebody that can click us through slides as we go? Fantastic. I'm going to share. The general purpose for us being here tonight is to share more about a ballot measure that was certified to the ballot by our Board of Education about two weeks ago, asking for a $39.42 million per year increase in revenue, so that we move out of 14th position out of 15 metro-area school districts in terms of funding that have put us at a really significant competitive disadvantage. So that's the primary purpose for our being here tonight. We appreciate the time that you've allotted to us. On the next slide, you'll see some things that we're very proud about. I want to add two things that are relevant and important for you to know that aren't captured on the slide, that developed after that Board of Education presentation. The first is that U.S. News &amp; World Report recently issued their ratings about schools in Colorado and throughout the United States. And you'll be pleased to know, I hope, that three of the top 15 schools in Colorado, high schools, are within Adams 12. Two of them are located in Broomfield. So at position number four is Stargate, which is a school located in Thornton, serves largely students who are gifted and talented and advanced academically. In ninth position is Prospect Ridge Academy, a charter school under our authority located within Broomfield. And then at number 14, and the second on the list in terms of large comprehensive high schools in the state, is Legacy High School. You all may know, a lot of those top 14 are schools that serve 600 students or fewer. Legacy serves more than 2,000 students, one of the larger high schools in the state. It was eclipsed only by Fairview High School out of Boulder Valley, which was number one in terms of large comprehensive high school ratings, and it beat out Cherry Creek, which just gives me a lot of pride, because a lot of people often feel like Cherry Creek is the gold standard in terms of high schools, and they do an excellent job there. But for Legacy to accomplish what it has with a very diverse and growing diverse population of students is something we're really proud about. I'll also share on the part that's disappointing that under the state's report card, we've taken pride in Adams 12 for a long time now about being the only school district of size that's not rural, that serves Adams County, that's been a performance-rated district under the state's accountability system. We haven't always been in that space. When I first started, we were rated as an improvement district. We've been rated a performance district for many years now, and we're disappointed that we moved just below the cut line in the most recent data that's come out from CDE and are designated as an improvement district for this year. There's a lot of, there's a number of schools throughout our system that have had some struggles post-pandemic and getting back to the spot they were. And at the same time, even before these ratings came forward, we've been looking at ways to get schools to a better spot moving forward. So I'm confident this will be a one-year designation for being improvement, and then we'll get back to where we have been and where we want to be, which is performance-rated. So I wanted to bring the record up to date. I'll just quickly highlight some of the data points on here. Grad rate for the class of 2024, 87.3% of our students graduating in four years. We don't have our data yet for the class of 2025. We'll get that from the state here in December. But I'll just say, by means of comparison, when I started, I started in the fall of 2009, and the first graduating class data that we saw was for the class of 2010. Our four-year grad rate then was 61.7%. So getting up to 87.3% is the byproduct of a lot of people working much more efficiently and effectively to support kids. We haven't done it by becoming a diploma factory. As you'll see in the next slide over, 72.4% of the kids who've taken an advanced placement exam over the last number of years have received either a 3, 4, or 5 on that exam, and are receiving college credit in the vast majority of school districts in the state. When I started, for the class of 2010, 42% of our students received a 3, 4, or 5. So more than a 30% raw increase in terms of students meeting college expectations. That's more than a 70% increase in terms of where we were at that 42% rate back in 2025. And you can see lots of kids earning industry certifications in things like welding and certified nursing assistants and being EMTs and trainings that they're doing to prepare them for a variety of careers, some of which they'll enter right after high school for many of our students. Many of our students, more than 2,000, earning college credit while they're in high school without paying tuition. And then finally, one of the things that we excel at in Adams 12 is growing students who are learning English as a second language and developing both their speaking and their written communication skills. Elementary, middle, and high school for seven years now, we've been at or above the state average. We're the only district in the state that can say that. So a lot to be proud of in Adams 12. And at the same time, as we move on to next slides, we know that we have some significant resource challenges that are starting to become problematic for us. Many of you may know that in the spring, we cut more than $27 million out of our budget for this school year and cut more than 150 jobs for this year, including positions like teacher librarians, interventionists who work with students who are far behind in literacy and mathematics, a variety of positions at the high school and middle school level where we had smaller electives that we just couldn't sustain with our finances. It was a tough spring, a painful spring for us, and the reason behind that is twofold. One is that we're declining enrollment, like many districts throughout the region are, other than places like St. Brain and 27J and Aurora, where there's a lot of new housing coming online. Others are not seeing housing growth and student population growth that they once saw. And because we're funded based on enrollment, we're all seeing some declines in funding when we're in that scenario because of declining student enrollment. But then for us, we're 14th out of 15th in terms of funding, so it makes the pressures more difficult. We don't have the same sort of checking account and bank account to help us through difficult times that many of our peers do, and that's why we have this measure on the ballot this year. Lori, anything to add so far?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the next slide. So this slide just captures that we didn't just huddle up in my office with a number of people on staff and come up with this proposal. We've done a lot of work over the last two years, frankly, to talk about what kinds of investments might we need. We had placed a measure last November on the ballot that included two different proposals that you may recall. One was an $830 million bond measure that came without a tax rate increase. That measure passed. The biggest part of that project is for the tear-down and rebuild of Thornton High School, which is in really dire, physical shape. We also asked at that time for Millevy override for more operating funds. That wasn't successful. We did some polling afterwards. Folks said, "We like you. We believe in the district. We're not dissatisfied. We're not dissatisfied with the investment plan that you've proposed. We're just stretched because of the big property value increases that we've seen run up very quickly and dramatically and the property tax increases that have come." So for those of us who said no, it was just because of property tax pressure. We've seen in some polling that we've done more recently that we have more support for Millevy override now than we did a year ago. So that's a very passable measure. And we also know that the engagement we've done with people to frame where we invest is something that we hope lands us in the right spot of saying what we've got in the plan are the things our community most values moving forward. Next slide. So Millevy overrides, school funding can be complex. I will say that there are three main sources that school districts in this region look to to fund their capital construction and their operations. One is just the basic funding that we get under what is called the School Finance Act. The legislature each year says how much money we're going to get. For Adams 12 this year, that's about $11,670 per kid. On top of that, districts often ask, as we did a year ago, for some additional money to build and repair facilities. And so that's a fairly common piece where you might see on your tax bill a bond redemption levy that's on your tax bill. And then the third piece is what we call local overrides, Millevy override measures that give you more operating funding. And those measures have become increasingly large, as you'll see on some of these slides. When I was just out of law school, baby attorney, what I saw at that time was that the most you could have in Millevy override dollars is about a 7.5% bump on top of what the state formula said you could get. The state has now increased that in multiple iterations over time, and they've added additional types of overrides you can ask for, with the net result being that you can get up to a 50% bump in your funding. And our neighbors in Boulder Valley are close to that 50% line now. So what's happened during my career is that I think many communities have said the state is not funding education adequately, and the voters of our state haven't approved state measures to increase funding more robustly. And so districts who feel like they can or need to get more money to provide programming or to compensate staff to be competitive have asked their communities for funding and have largely been successful. And we now find ourselves in the spot of being 14th out of 15th, as I think I've said a number of times now. We also know, as you see in that last bullet, the state of Colorado is not going to help us in Adams 12 or frankly, anywhere, deal with budget challenges for the foreseeable future. You're aware that the legislature just had a special session to solve a $700 million-plus deficit for the current fiscal year. We're seeing projections of a $0.5 billion shortfall for next fiscal year. It's just, the state is not going to come to our rescue, nor is the federal government. We've actually seen some things proposed that were overcome in the short term about federal funding recisions, but moving forward, we don't expect to get more federal funding, and it's likely that we'll actually get quite a bit less down the road. So helping ourselves is imperative, and I'm here to share more about what we would do with that money and why we need it so badly. Next slide. So this shows where we stand in terms of this 14th out of 15th. And I'll just say, one of the easy examples to share here, given that Broomfield has substantial numbers of students enrolled in Boulder Valley and Adams 12, is when you look at that 46.76% per student amount of override funding that Boulder Valley receives versus the 2009 in supplemental funding that we get in Adams 12, that roughly $2,600 difference between the two districts. When you start to multiply it by 32,000 students, what you see are deficits of $80 to $90 million in terms of what we receive each year, less than a Boulder Valley receives. And it makes a huge difference in terms of what you can do in providing programming and providing competitive compensation to your staff. Next slide. So you hear where we stand, the limitations that come with it. What would we do with the money if our voters are generous enough to say yes? We'd invest it in three main areas. One is in putting ourselves in a more competitive spot to recruit and retain staff that are world-class and outstanding in what they do. A second area is to expand some of our programming, especially around career and technical education at the middle and high school level, as well as helping some students through transitions into middle school and high school where they often struggle. And then the third big bucket is around safety and mental health supports for students. Next slide. World-class staff, they're the ones that make great things happen for kids each and every day. The magic happens in classrooms and in schools, and we're finding ourselves more recently in a spot where we have more and more vacancies that we cannot fill, or that we feel like we've hired a candidate, they've said yes. And then when something comes along that pays them more money, they often say, "On second thought, I changed my mind, and I'm going to leave." When the board took action on this measure two weeks ago, there are a number of testimonials that our principals made about, "I had this person who said yes, and they changed their mind to take a job in Boulder Valley paying $20,000 more per year." I had somebody who's been on our staff for 12 years, and they begrudgingly said, "I'm leaving," even though I love the place, "so that I can make $15,000 more in Aurora Public Schools." And that's what we're facing more often and more often and more often. Right now, we have about 120 vacancies for support staff in our system, everything from bus drivers to special education paraprofessionals to just general classroom paraprofessionals. 120 vacancies there that are largely driven by people saying, "I can make more money at Target or at Burger King or somewhere else than I can in your district." And we currently have 20 teaching vacancies that it's likely we will not fill the entire year, just given the time of year we're in and the market disadvantages that we face. So we want to get in the spot of getting the very best people and keeping them, but money will help us in that space. Next slide. This slide, 10th out of 15th in average teacher salaries is actually, I think, a little generous in terms of our reality. There are 15 school districts in this metro region, but three of them really are not part of our market in a meaningful way. So the Sheridan School District is one of the 15. It has less than 1,000 kids. They hire less than 75 teachers. They're not a big player in the 26,000-plus teacher market in the 15-school district area. The same is true of Inglewood Public Schools. Less than 2,400 kids, K-12, and they have about 150 teachers there. We're not losing many teachers or fighting with those districts very hard to get teachers to come to Adams 12 versus them. And then one of the other districts below us is Douglas County, which is so far away that there's not a lot of teachers deciding Douglas County versus Adams 12. They're usually debating whether it's Littleton Cherry Creek versus Douglas County. Adams 12 really isn't part of that market. So as a practical matter, we're next to bottom. The only district that we're above right now in terms of salary in this regional salary market is 27J, which is largely the Brighton and Commerce City communities. And the challenge we have with them is we pay more money, not a whole lot more, and they have a four-day school week, which is really attractive to lots of staff and to a variety of families as well. So four-day week is not something that we have interest in pursuing in our district, but we feel like adding some more money and will help us secure people to fill lots of these vacancies we currently have. Next slide. And that slide shows largely what I just talked through, where we stand. And right now, it's only 27J that's below us in terms of our actual market in this region. Next slide. Often what I hear from people in terms of questions about, "Do you really need the money?" is a belief that you spend way too much money on administration. You're top-heavy, got your central office, and you'll be just fine in paying your bills. And that number two, you don't put enough money into the classroom, which is related in many respects to this piece about you put too much money in administration. So I have two charts here that reflect data that's pulled from the Colorado Department of Education. Each year, there's a variety of reports that we submit and data that they pull and aggregate. And one of the things they look at is, "How much do you spend on administration?" And that administration number that you see reflected on the left includes principals, assistant principals, people who also work at our central office in HR, finance, IT, facilities, and the like. And you'll see on there that we're third lowest, tied with Doug Co. in terms of the 15 metro-area districts in terms of being lowest in that space at 6.3%. I'll also just save for the record that Cherry Creek's number is consistently lower by quite a bit than everyone else, and we know from people who've worked in finance there that the way they account for their staff is unique. And so it's really, we don't believe in accurate representation of how much they're actually spending on administration in Cherry Creek. So we take pride in being very low and skinny in that space. We want to put as much money into classrooms as we can, which is what you see in the next slide over, that in terms of how much we're investing, more than 65% of what we spend on salaries goes to educators. Another 9% for paras, for a total of almost 75% of what we spend on staff in our district goes into classrooms. It would frankly be even higher in recent years, but we have so many vacancies. It would frankly be even higher in recent years, but we have so many vacancies, the 120 support staff vacancies, the 20 teaching vacancies I have described, that pulls our percentages down. So if we can get more money and that attracts people and keeps people, those numbers will go up in the future. Next slide. So what we propose in this plan is to allocate a significant portion of the 39.42 million into employee compensation. What I've just described about teachers is also true for our support staff. We're near the bottom of the barrel in terms of bus driver compensation. We're low for a variety of positions that support students directly and indirectly. And the same is true frankly of our principals. Our principals are typically 12th to 15th in the market in terms of their compensation compared to that peer group. So we'd like to invest significant money in bringing us closer to the market. We're still not going to even be at the midpoint, because to do that would require another $50 million a year just to get to the middle of the pack, and we feel like that's just too big of an ask of our community. But if we can invest $25 million into compensation, it will take us a big stride forward in terms of being more competitive. Next slide, please. Programming. We'll just move on to the next slide and get to brass tacks. So CTE is something that we feel like we're a state leader in, and objectively, there's a lot of data that confirms that is true. Career and tech ed is largely, but not exclusively, programing we offer at our Bowman Technical Education Facility by Thornton High School and at the Washington Square Facility. That's about 125th in Washington. That's where we offer programs like auto mechanics, auto body repair, diesel mechanics, construction programs, welding programs, certified nursing assistant programs, EMT, firefighting prep, law enforcement prep, vet tech, et cetera. And what we see there is, the students who participate in those programs, they're almost 100% certain to graduate from high school. And not only to graduate, but then do something productive and meaningful once they're done. They'll have a good-paying job that's open to them. They may choose to enlist in the military, and they're going to have a skill set that's often very desirable in terms of where they're going to be assigned, or they can go on to college and be very successful in that space. So providing more CTE opportunities, we feel like, has been essential. We have waitlists, and we have students who have interest in a variety of programs like aviation, advanced manufacturing, cosmetology, that they say, we'd like those things, can you please offer it? These funds would allow us to do that. Next slide. The funds would also allow us to do some more hands-on learning opportunities for students at the middle school level. Back when I was a student at Adams 12, long ago in the dark ages, we did lots of things, like we had home ec classes where we sewed and we cooked, we had wood shop classes where we sawed things up and drilled things, and then all of that stuff was gone, almost entirely gone by the time I came as superintendent 15 years ago. And what we see is a lot of students say, I just can't do any more textbook stuff. I need a break from that. I need something that's hands-on. I want something that feels more relevant to things that I may do as a job down the road than what I'm seeing in some of the academic courses that I have. I want those kinds of opportunities in middle school, not to wait until I'm a junior or a senior in high school to do these hands-on, career-related things. And so we've got now capital to equip our middle school classrooms with things that will allow kids to do some cooking, some sewing, some tech things around coding. But we need people, qualified staff, to lead those programs as the next step in that process. And so a substantial part of this package brings the money to hire staff for middle school CTE, brings money at the high school level for it, brings people who can, that middle part there, post-secondary workforce readiness coordinators, those are the people who help kids find internships and apprenticeships and practical work-based learning experiences. So these would be critical investments in moving a really successful part of our district to an even stronger place down the road. Next slide. I'm going as fast as I can, sorry, but there's a lot of important stuff I, I hope that you're seeing in this presentation. This next slide notes that 21% of our ninth graders are off track for graduation based on how they're accruing credits. We have many students that, as they transition to ninth grade, fail multiple courses that freshman year. It's a tough transition. And there's classes like mathematics that I think a lot of people would expect would be difficult for kids at the high school level. There's also some like physical education that shouldn't be as difficult, and a lot of students fail those courses too. And in many cases, what we hear is, I've gone from a smaller environment with a lot of teachers who are closely checking up on me to a big high school with 1,800 to 2,200 students in it. I've got 500 or 600 kids in my freshman class. I feel lost. I'm not connected to peers in the way that I like, and I'm not connected to staff. I need a smaller place for at least part of my day, so that I get good study skills in place, that teachers are checking in on me, and some of the really hard classes that I struggle with, or students at scale typically struggle with, like math, that I can do it in a smaller setting with more teacher help. And that's what a portion of these override proceeds would allow us to do. Next slide. So the $1.2 million that's identified here would allow us to do just what I said, find smaller classes where kids get to support as freshmen and as sixth graders, another really tough transition point for students. And instead of having them struggle and fail, and then try to catch them up later, get them off to the very best possible start as we can, with success both in their academic space and in terms of developing relationships with peers at their school. Next slide. And then finally, I think this council knows well that for a lot of years, we've worked with you and with McWhinney and others to conceive a school that would be built up in the baseline development, that would be STEM-focused, preschool through 12th grade, to build on the outstanding success we've had in the STEM space for about 16 years now, starting at 2K8 schools and then continuing on in Northland High School that offers lots of STEM programming. And there's two things, as we talk to our constituents, we've heard pretty strongly. One is, we want those same kinds of things that those STEM schools have in terms of problem-based learning, practical, problem-solving things at all of our schools and not just at our STEM schools. And we also believe that kids need to start sooner in time than just high school in many cases to explore and apply STEM-related concepts. There's a big push at the state level really to say that we all need to do that. The state has changed graduation requirements for this year's freshmen moving forward. That's not going to be enough to get 23 credits, as students have in the past. One of the new requirements is, you have to pass a half-credit or a semester course on financial literacy. That's a big plus. We've already been big proponents of that in Adams 12 and have been doing that work for a number of years. But the other big game changer is to get a high school diploma four years from now. You need to have 12 credits of concurrent college enrollment by the time you graduate. You need to have an industry certification in a high-demand field, or you need to have relevant and rigorous work-based learning experiences. We feel like the best way to make that happen for kids in high school is to get them thinking about careers and applied, hands-on learning, starting in elementary school, especially in the STEM arena. And so one of the big investments we would make, as you'll see in the next slide, is to hire some staff so that as part of the specials part of the day, you have art, music, physical education, and something that's a STEM-based exploration class where you take things you've learned in more traditional textbook learning and apply it to problem-solving and building and making things. We feel like it will be a big game changer for all the kids in our community, and that those opportunities won't continue to be held just at our STEM programs. Next slide. Safety. We'll transition on the next slide, and I'll just say a few things in that space. I was having a conversation with an important stakeholder about two weeks ago about safety, and the remark that I heard was, school safety just isn't the same sort of pressing issue or concern for families that it was like seven or eight years ago. And so I just wonder, to what degree, safety should be part of our messaging moving forward about this mill levy override program? And then the next day was the shooting at the Catholic School or the Catholic Church in Minneapolis, and then I started to get, as I often do after shootings and tragedies in our country, outreach from parents about, what are we going to do about unsafety? What can we do to mitigate this risk even further in Adams 12? And so I think it is and has been timely. What we realize at this point is, we've fallen behind districts like 27J and Aurora Public Schools in our safety presence, especially at elementary school. Places like 27J are now adding armed security officers that they contract with through a private vendor to provide that kind of support at elementary schools. And Aurora Public Schools has also significantly expanded some of their safety force at the elementary level. There's not enough police officers to do that work, at least at scale. I don't know what the reality is in Broomfield, but across the five jurisdictions and Adams County and the Sheriff's Department, as we visit with a lot of those agencies, they tell us, even if you ask for money for more SROs at elementary, we're not going to be able to hire enough officers to meet your demand. So what we've proposed to do instead, as you look at the next slide, is to build on what we've done currently, where we currently have three people who are post-certified, which meet law enforcement credentialing requirements for possessing and using weapons for a security purpose at work. We have three of those people now who serve the entire school district community, and we'd like to add five more of them so that we can get from ratios of roughly one of those people to every one of our 10 elementary schools to a 1 to 4 ratio. That doesn't obviously allow someone just to be at a school the entire time every day like we would like, and like SROs at middle and high school allow us to do, but allows us to be much more quickly responsive to situations and incidents that could be threatening. That's one of our key investments. We also look to add someone to monitor our properties at night, as much as we can when we're present. We can mitigate vandalism that often happens to our buildings at nighttime, and beyond that, we can just do spot checks, periodic checks, to make sure that our custodial staff and other staff have closed all the doors and locked them before exiting. Because if that hasn't happened, and there are times when people miss that step, then you have exposure both to safety incidents and to vandalism. So we want to expand our presence there. And then finally, at middle school, we just want to have another person who's not armed and not a law enforcement person, who can be present on our campuses and identify students who are engaging in misbehavior and intervene quickly, or to identify people who don't belong on the campus. And again, intervene with those people quickly, have them leave, and if we have people who refuse to quickly get higher levels of support out there to address the person. Next slide. In the mental health, I think this has been a longstanding issue of concern. On the, the good news side, I think many of us have probably seen headlines in recent days that the suicide incidence and rate for adolescents has declined in this last year, which is the first time in a while that that's been true, and that's a huge step in the right direction that we're grateful for. But even though that metric is showing signs of improvement, we still see more than a quarter of our high school kids who say, I'm depressed, I'm anxious, I don't want to be at school because of mental health issues. And so what we propose to do in that space, as we look at the next slide, is to hire more people who are licensed social workers, psychologists and counselors to provide more of the support that students are wanting and just can't get right now. Oftentimes, the social worker psychologist licensed counselors in our district have caseloads of 65 to 70 students. You can't provide timely, responsive and adequate support to students when you have that large of a caseload. You may wonder, how can you get very much bang for your buck at 320,000 bucks? The good news for us is that we work with Community Reach, which is a mental health provider in the community, and they charge us a discounted rate of $68,000 per social worker psychologist or licensed counselor. So it takes our money a lot further that way. This will make a big dent in allowing us to bring another therapist to each of our high schools to reduce those caseloads and be more timely and thorough in dealing with student mental health needs. Next slide. So this is how it all breaks down in terms of getting to $39.42 million. And the final thing I'll say, that I don't know that I have another slide that demonstrates this, I'm often asked, what would this cost for an average homeowner? The average home within our school district at this point is valued at $661,000. That is a $34 per month increase in, in taxes that people would pay if this were to go forward and be approved. It's roughly $5 per 100,000 in property tax values. So if you have a $500,000 home, it's about $200 or $25 per month. And all I would say is, again, when I look at that list of districts, we're much more of an affluent community than Inglewood and Sheridan and Aurora, and so many of those other people who have approved in past years, much more generous investments in their schools. As I said before, to get even to the middle of the pack would be a $50 million per year ask. We just feel like that is too much of an ask, given the property tax burdens that many face and the living expense challenges that many face. But if we don't help ourselves, what I fear is that I'll be back in a year saying, here's the number of vacancies that we have that are even greater, and even much greater challenges than I've described here tonight. So that's our package, the why behind it, where we would invest it. Thank you so much for your thoughtful listening throughout this presentation. Ms. Goldstein and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and if there was interest in the council formally supporting this measure at some point, we would welcome and appreciate that support as well.
I just want to say, and I just want to say thank you in the past for supporting us in every endeavor that we've ever asked you to. And so as an elected official to you guys, the elected officials, I would hope that maybe you would consider a resolution to support this. If you would like, I have a model I can send you. And yeah, questions?
Thank you very much, Superintendent Kudowski and Board President Goldstein. Very enlightening, very important information. Thank you for shedding some light on the severity of the fiscal situation. We do allow public comment on this item. If anyone would like to speak, please make your way to the podium.
I'll just say that I'm a Broomfield resident, and I'll be voting yes. I would vote yes. Actually, I needed to correct that. I am a Broomfield resident, but I'm, I'm just over the, the Boulder, on the Boulder Valley side now. I'll just say, it's just painful for me as somebody who lives on that side of the street, on that side of Sheridan, to know that there's an 80 to 90 million dollar per year difference in terms of resources available to kids at Aspen Creek K-8 in my neighborhood versus the students who are at Brenidian and Cady Ridge across the street. So wearing my Broomfield resident hat, I just thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much, Chris. Yes.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Anderson from the Broadlands, and I wanted to address Mayor, Leadership Staff, City Council, and all of the attendees this evening. Our children, or for me currently, my grandchildren's education is a priority and one of the highest investment and positive return opportunities. With three adult children, graduates from Legacy and Stargate, our 39-year-old holds a master's degree, my 35-year-old, two bachelors, and our 27-year-old is currently changing careers and pursuing his bachelor's in cybersecurity and information assurance after a science degree. Why am I giving you this level of detail? Because the children in Adams 12 schools now should be poised for the best success possible, and although I no longer have children in the district, I'll support this mill levy as if my own children were. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard from the public? Anyone online? All right, we'll go to council questions and comments. Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for coming for your presentation. I'll be quick. I do will mention, both my kids went to Legacy. Your Legacy 2000 program is a stellar college preparatory program. Anybody going to Legacy should look it out. And my daughter did graphic design at Bowman. She always tells me she learned more there than she did at college, which is a bitter pill when we're paying the student loan. But thank you. And I should also have to mention, the band is stellar too. Could you please explain to a fifth grader or less, the term is mill override? What does that mean? Why is that term there? So I know that's going to be the first question I'd be asked.
Yeah, I wish I knew the history and the origin of that term. It's just become common vernacular in the school sector these days. I think what it was likely intended to mean is that the state formula gives you X dollars, the 11,670 that we're getting now, but if you want to override that and supplement that under principles of local control and have your community have a little bit more, you can do that through an override. So I think that's likely the history of that term.
So the term override is a bit of a misnomer, but it's just simply a levy, more support for the schools.
True.
And then real quick questions to put in context, I think some people don't understand, you know, school districts don't get to choose their boundaries. And one reason Boulder Valley has so much more money is they have a very large corporate and industrial tax base that you simply, Adams 12 is mostly residential and retail. And so therefore, a lot lands more heavily on homeowners. But I was, trying to put in context is why you're here, why the funding level is what it is, is not necessarily a level of support. it is, is not necessarily a level of support to the community, from the community, or what you're doing, it's simply the financial circumstances of your boundaries. Would that be an accurate representation?
It is. Adams 12 was created as a bedroom community that's largely residential, and if you have a half-million-dollar commercial property and a half-million-dollar residential property, the residential property is taxed at about 7% of its actual value, the commercial property is taxed at about 27%. So if you're a bedroom community, it puts you at a big disadvantage in terms of raising funds.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for being here. I really appreciate the time that you spend here because we know that your time is very precious working in schools and particularly in the school district. We know that we don't always have your time, and I just really do appreciate that tonight. It seems like we have been operating on a lean and mean budget. I was a former school teacher myself, and even being maxed out at 30 was enough for me. I found that ninth graders actually were pretty cool, and they overrun your whole school if there's 33 or more in your classroom. And we know that there are classroom sizes that could get too big. So I really appreciate the fact that we can attract good staff and then have that support staff, too, because sometimes as a teacher, you do act as the therapist, and you just don't know it. And it would be nice for teachers to concentrate on teaching. The data and the community surveys, I want to just tell the whole public that Adams 12 is by far and long, I've taught in four different states. You guys do some of the best and most thorough community surveys, whether it's even changing your bell schedule, or if you are just, you know, changing traffic patterns or anything, if you're changing just your focus. You guys do so many good community surveys, and so I really appreciate what you guys do, and this is no exception. And then the career and technical education, of course, you guys have been wonderful partners. I hear many good things about that. Also, for the public to know, they have an incredible Adams 12 Leadership Academy, that when you take that class, you really understand what's going on in the school system. And so I encourage anyone to take that class, even if you don't have kids in Adams 12. We need your voices, too. I would like to ask a little bit about the children who are unseen unhoused. So, you know, when I was in high school, I was sleeping on other people's couches or garages. And I think that there's these kids that we just kind of forget about, and we have federal funding that is probably not going to come down with that. So I'm just curious as to what are we doing for those kids who are unseen unhoused, and how would funding affect them?
So we have a lot of money that we've allocated to the purpose of serving students who are unseen unhoused, often given the term of homeless historically. And that's something that regardless of our challenges, we've not had any discussion about reducing or curtailing. If the feds or the state reduce that, then we would step in and find a way to replenish it, but we just feel like that's one of the essential non-negotiable things that we have to do regardless of our financial status. But those services are costly because a lot of times you're working with families that have language barriers. Adams 12 is unique in terms of the size of its population of people who've come here as refugees from Afghanistan. We have the largest population of families from Afghanistan. There's multiple languages that we need to be equipped in dealing with so that we can communicate with those students and families. And it's really time-intensive. One staff member with one parent and one child oftentimes for hours, multiple times, to get them acclimated and supported in the way that they need. So we do allocate a fair amount of resources to that task. We won't take it away. We're not planning to expand it either in this spot. One of the pieces that we're trying to sort out right now is, are we going to see changes, both in terms of refugees and immigrants in our student enrollment, as well as the number of unhoused students? There's some indicators that the number of students who are here as immigrants has declined significantly for this school year compared to some past years, which is not a surprise, given some changes in immigration enforcement. But the unhoused part is more difficult for us to have a good handle on where that stands right now. Bottom line is, we're not going to step away from that commitment, no matter what.
Thank you. And I know a lot of people like from Afghanistan and Ukraine, you guys have actually employed. And a lot of those people are great people and stellar leaders in our community, and they work with different people. So if you're from Ukraine, they work with some families from Russia or things like that. So they're really stepping up into helping the families. Can you guys explain how you guys already help with family initiatives even beyond people who are immigrants? I know that sometimes you guys help with LEAP, with families having issues, you know, paying their bills for keeping the lights on, right? So can you guys explain some other things that, you know, probably in the 90s, we didn't do stuff like this as teachers? But I love to just share with the people what school systems are doing now. They're not just teaching.
Adams 12 at scale, when you look at the aggregate, about 50% of our students on the nose qualify for free and reduced lunch. And people often wonder, what does that mean? So for a family of four, your gross annual income to qualify for free lunch is less than $41,000 a year. For reduced lunch, it's less than $60,000 a year. Housing, obviously, if you're able to find it, is going to chew up a whole lot of a $41,000 a year gross income. And so that often leaves people very much short in terms of money for utilities, in terms of food, in terms of clothing. And we have a variety of community partners that help with that. There was a nice presentation that we were part of about a month ago where Amazon gave us a $20,000 check and brought lots of food from their warehouse that we could distribute to families in need. The $20,000 allows us to purchase food and have it on hand at our schools so that families can access it there. A Precious Child is a charity that we've worked with closely that provides backpacks, food, clothing at various parts of the year. Our Adams 12 Education Foundation often receives donations from third-party businesses and individuals in the community that they also invest in. Clothing and food in particular, that's offered at our schools. There are some funds that we can help people get access to for utility support. So there's a variety of things that we're constantly working with families on with hopes that it makes a difference in terms of family stability and kids coming to school. Because the sad truth in our district is that while 50% of our kids qualify for free and reduced lunch, in a number of our schools, including places like Federal Heights Elementary, it's closer to 95% of our students. And the number of students who miss more than 18 days of school year has been in excess of 30% of our students for the last four to five years post-COVID. And the more we can do to provide the basic essentials like food and clothing and make sure that there's housing and utilities to keep the heat on, the more likely we are to get kids to come to school.
Thank you. One last just sort of statement, and that's it. A lot of the refugees are, we see these kids joining the Honor Society, too. So if you go to any Honor Society night, you will see a lot of people, kids there, that are really doing well in these schools. The last thing I will say is that I would like to have our council eventually support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you all for coming tonight. My children all are, have been residents, students of Adams 12, and they've all done great in their schools. You know, each one of them is different and has unique needs and abilities, and Adams 12 has done a great job of meeting all of their needs. So, thank you. And Mayor, I actually would like to see if council would like to, if there's any objections to directing our staff this evening to bring forth a resolution to support this measure formally.
All right, well, are there any concerns from council with directing staff to prepare a resolution to support the mill levy override on the 2025 ballot for the Adams 12 Five Star School District? No concerns? Will you please work with staff, Ms. Hoffman, to draft that resolution of support? And let's try to wrap this up because we have a full house and we have a long agenda. So, Councilmember Winn, brevity is appreciated.
Absolutely, Mayor. I just want to say, you know, I really appreciate y'all being here, coming out here, and knowing that you've served 15 years as superintendent is, would make you probably one of the most longest-tenured superintendents in the Denver metro area. And my only question is, you know, I understand why this is important. I have, you know, I am a child of public school districts from BVSD, and so I recognize that our levy mills, our funds are important. But the question I pose to you, Superintendent, and of course, President Goldstein, is, what would happen if we do not pass this?
So if this doesn't pass, we will be in the exact same cycle that we were in the spring, where we made the 27 and a half million dollars in cuts and 150 job loss. We're going to be in a spot that I think is at least that dire, given that I believe we're likely to see a larger enrollment decline this year than what we had forecasted, largely from folks who are probably newer to the country who've left. So that's going to be a major headwind, and the state is not going to have money to fund K-12, I don't believe, as robustly as they did this year. So we have those two headwinds, and then we're going to have lots of peer districts that do have these resources that will continue to increase compensation. Last year, Adams 14 passed their measure, and they promptly took action to move their starting salary to the highest in the region, at $64,000 and some dollars. We'll just see other people raise their salaries, raise their salaries. We're already $25,000 a year less than average teacher salary than Boulder Valley, and we're not going to be able to just sit on our sign, on our hands and say we're doing a pay freeze. So well, part of what we'll have to do is to cut some positions so that we can do a modest pay increase so that we don't have more people saying, I can't do this anymore at a $25,000 discount compared to what I'd make in Boulder Valley.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, and that is why we should support this. So thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Good, seeing none. Thank you all so much. We just have a huge agenda, so.
Thank you, Mayor. We understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Kudowski and President Goldstein. So we're moving on to the council member reports section. Does any member of council have any reports or updates this evening? Mayor Protem Shav.
Thank you, Mayor. So council received a memo from the, well, we received it from a resident, that was a memo from the FAA to the FAA that was dated June 10, 2025. In this memo, it stated Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport currently leads the national airspace system in a number of potentially significant events, which include both runway incursions and airborne safety incidents. The memo highlighted pattern, pattern traffic, runway occupancy, IFR arrivals and departures, VFR arrivals and departures, helicopter operations. The memo concluded with stating, the goal of these procedural changes is to remove some of the complexities that exist in the BJC operation with Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. The FAA will meet with the FAA, starting meetings on June 24. So after receiving this memo from a resident, I reached out to RMMA Administration, Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Administration, and they only recently received this memo as well. Again, this was a memo from the FAA to the FAA, so they were not copied on that memo. Councilmember Ward and I are working together to get more information about the impacts of this memo, and we'll share those answers that we received to those questions and any further information that we receive. But at my outreach just yesterday, the RMMA is still waiting for their questions to be answered as well. So just wanted to provide that to the public as well, that we are looking into this. The other piece that I wanted to say with the Adams 12 Five Star Schools here tonight, and especially mentioning Legacy High School, I wanted to ensure the community is aware and plan to attend the annual Mayor's Cup football game between Broomfield High School and Legacy High School, which will take place at Adams 12 North Stadium in Westminster. The game is next week on Thursday, September 18 at 7:00 PM. Come out, support the high school students and athletes in our community, regardless of whichever high school you choose to root for in that game. Thanks, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim.
Thank you. The Sustainability Department in ACE has asked me to invite everyone to learn how to boost your homes' energy efficiency at little to no cost at the free 30 Tips and 30 Minutes webinar, where you will learn how to save money and energy in every room. Tune in online, September 16, from noon to 1:00. You'll find out more information at broomfield.org/energyefficiencywebinar. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council reports? I just want to remind everyone and invite you to our annual 9/11 memorial ceremony. It's Thursday, 9/11 at 9:00 AM sharp at the 9/11 memorial by the library. We will be memorializing 24 years since this tragedy, so I hope you can join us for this really nice memorial. All right, we'll now continue with general public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on matters other than the items already listed on tonight's agenda. So if anyone would like to be heard on any random topic, please make your way to the podium. Everybody's here for a reason. We'll move on to that reason. All right, anybody on the phone? Okay, we'll now continue with the report section of the agenda. City and County Manager Hoffman, do you have a report?
I know everyone is eager to talk about the community, so I'm going to do 100 words or less, letting everyone know that our team in the back, Ken Rutt, Justin Munt, and Jeff Ruger have won the award. It sounds like kind of a squishy award, but I assure you it is not. Broomfield, it's the first time we have been in first place for our water tasting award. We have, it's been, it's, yeah. And anytime we have anything with infrastructure, those of us that find infrastructure sewer, water, wastewater, super sexy, we get very excited about these things. But out of Colorado, Wyoming, and Nevada, so it wasn't just in the state of Colorado, we'll be going to the national competition on their dime. But it's really a testament to Ken and his crew, and a testament to this community. I know that water rates have been the bane of many of our thoughts and existence for the last four and a half years. I take it seriously. I take it personally. And this really is where some of those funds, not just for infrastructure, but for the dual-source water systems that we maintain, are effective treatment. Again, a testament to Ken and his crew with the continued education, engagement, involvement, and certification in order to make that happen. And the last piece is really the water foul containment and contamination, which is a really significant hurdle that our team continues to be focused on and overcome. I just couldn't be prouder of this Public Works team and all that they've achieved. So we'll keep everyone posted as they go to DC in March and what the outcome will be. And until then, everybody continue to enjoy the small yay of water. And thank you.
Thank you. Now, City and County Attorney Rogers, do you have a report?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Council's consideration of the consent items is next. The clerk will read all of the consent items by title, and there'll be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read Agenda Item 6A through 6C by title?
6A, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Council Meeting of August 26, 2025. 6B, Proposed Resolution Number 2025-130, Authorizing and Consulting Agreement with Martin Martin, Inc., for Construction Management Services for the Industrial Lane Bikeway Phase Two Project. 6C, Proposed Resolution Number 2025-117, Declaring the Intent of the City Council of the City and County of Broomfield, Colorado, to Issue Multifamily Housing Revenue Bond and Authorizing Carry Forward Allocation.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed with public comments on these three items. I don't think y'all are here for that. Anyone on council have any questions or comments on the consent items? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion by council that consent items 6A through 6C be approved? Councilmember Ward?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Winn?
I second this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously 10 to 0. The first item under Action Items this evening is the public hearing and council's consideration on second reading of a proposed ordinance related to a business investment agreement with Raven Space Systems Incorporated. I'll now declare the public hearing open. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Hello, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Council. Jeff Shire, Economic Development Manager with the City and County of Broomfield. We have Raven Space Systems here. We have Blake Heron representing the company here with us tonight. If you have any questions, if we move to the second slide here, we just have them down for a second reading for this business investment agreement. We have the details of it here. So if you have any questions, please let us know. Happy to answer any that you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shire, and thank you for being here, Blake. We'll take public comments on this item. If anyone would like to be heard on the Raven Space Systems item? If anyone would like to be heard on the Raven Space Systems item? No? Council questions and comments? Seeing none. There being no further questions, the public hearing is closed. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2274. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
7A, Ordinance Number 2274, Approving a Business Investment Agreement with Raven Space Systems, Inc.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on second and final reading and order published by title? Councilmember Henkel?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember when?
I second this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2274. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Welcome to Broomfield.
Thank you very much. Excited to be here.
Next, under Action Items this evening. So since we have a full house, we can swap the order, Ms. Rogers, and do 7C before 7B, because that first presentation went a lot longer than I had planned.
I'm looking over at Ms. Clemmons, and I.
We're moving this long now, you notice? So, okay, we'll get, we'll get this done real quick. Next under Action Items this evening is the public hearing and council's consideration on second reading of proposed ordinance related to trash hauler licenses. I'll now declare the public hearing open. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Ms. Clemmons is going to run through this, and we're going to do another 25 words or less version.
That's right. So tonight is second reading for ordinance number 2272, transferring the trash hauler license. A detailed presentation was provided at the first reading, and since there have been no changes, we will skip to the last slide and just focus on the highlights. So it transfers approval from city council to the city clerk's office, the revocation authority from city council to the local licensing authority, and modifies the fee structure, removing the specific fee amount from municipal code and gives city and county manager Hoffman or designee the, to establish the fees for the administrative action. That concludes our presentation. We'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clemmons. Would anyone like to comment on this item? Any questions or comments from council? Will the clerk, there being no further questions, the public hearing is closed. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2272. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
7B, Ordinance Number 2272, Transferring Licensing Responsibilities for All Trash Hauler Licenses from the City Council to the City and County Clerk's Office.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on second and final reading and order published in full? Mayor Protem Shav?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Henkel?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2272. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote, and those results will be displayed. That passes unanimously 10 to 0. Next, under Action Items this evening is the public hearing and council's consideration of a resolution relating to proposed residential development at the Trails at Westlake and Westlake Farms. I'll now declare the public hearing open. We'll follow the city's standard public hearing procedures. First, staff will present a summary of the proposal. Next, we'll have the applicant's presentation. Then we'll ask for public comments and final comments from the applicant, and finally questions from the city council members. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to, to begin the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, community. I see Lynn Merwin is sitting down, but Judy Hammer is going to walk us through this item, our senior planner. Ms. Hammer, please walk us through.
Good afternoon, City Council and Mayor, Mayor Protem. Judy Hammer, representing Planning Development, our Planning Division. Next slide, please. The project areas are generally located south of Misty Street, east of Lowell Boulevard, and Paldera Recreation Center. This is for two final plats, two site development plans, a rezoning, a planned unit development, and a planned unit development plan amendment. The Trails at Westlake is surrounded by existing residential neighborhoods to the east, south, and west, and immediately north of Trails Park South. The development applications were reviewed as a single development. They are sharing the same homeowners association and amenities. When calculating the affordable housing requirements and public land dedication for residential development, staff considered the entire 50-lot subdivision and combined the acreage. The existing trails will be connected through subdivisions. This aerial image shows the relationship between the existing developments. Next slide, please. The comprehensive plan designation for these properties is residential. The proposed rezoning and use are consistent with the comprehensive land use map. Next slide, please. This is the Westlake Farms PUD plan, and it establishes the design standards associated with the single-unit detached residential, including the setbacks, architecture, and street layout. The final plaque creates seven residential lots, three tracks, and will establish a road for access into the development. The primary access will be taken from Misty Street with a secondary one-way private drive that will give residents access from Lowell Boulevard into the development. The drive at the southern end will provide right-in, right-out access to this development and to the north and the residential property to the west. The access has been reviewed and accepted by Traffic Engineering and North Metro Fire and Rescue Districts, excuse me. The existing residential unit to the east, shown here to the right of the screen, will also use the one-way private drive and the new north-south road for access. The detention pond is shown at the northeast corner of the development. The drainage report and plans identified the need for an off-site five-foot drainage easement over the property immediately to the east. A fully executed drainage easement agreement will be required prior to recordation of the final plaque for this development. Landscaping for the seven-lot neighborhood includes street trees to be planted every 40 linear feet instead of 20 along the interior street. Per the Broomfield Tree Preservation Plan, the existing trees on Westlake Farm property were surveyed, and per the requirements established in the tree preservation plan, the applicant will be required to provide tree mitigation to offset the trees slated for removal. Since the tree requirement has been reduced, tree mitigation will be addressed through tree planting in nearby parks as described in greater detail in the staff report, and this requirement is also captured in the subdivision improvement agreement. A traffic study prepared for this site indicated that traffic impacts from the proposed Westlake Farms development are considered to be minor. The existing roadway system and traffic controls, including the intersection at Misty Street and Lowell Boulevard, are able to accommodate the traffic from the proposed additional seven residential lots. Next slide, please. This shows the 43-lot subdivision known as, referred to as Trails at Westlake. The final plaque creates the 43 residential lots with a public park. Trail segments will also be established, providing connections to this existing trail system to the north, south, and southeast. Six income-aligned, single-unit residential homes are proposed to be interspersed within the subdivision, which meets Broomfield's affordable housing requirements. Vehicular access will be provided via existing King Circle and Julian Street from the south and Briarwood Drive from the north. The Fire District and Traffic Engineering reviewed and accepted access and turnaround shown here at the northeast corner of that cul-de-sac in the right of the screen. A detention pond is shown at the southern end in the middle is labeled. And then the drainage report was reviewed and accepted for this property by Engineering Division. The existing trees on the property were surveyed. Since trees, including cottonwoods, will be removed for, for the development. The tree survey was reviewed and accepted by the Broomfield Landscape Architects, and per the tree preservation plan, the applicant will be required to provide tree mitigation to offset the trees removed. The trees will also be replanted in nearby parks, per the terms outlined in the subdivision improvement agreement. Next slide, please. This shows some street views as prepared by the developer. Next slide, please. The development request includes variances from the Broomfield Municipal Code allowing for a custom development plan. The table lists the variances, which are discussed in detail in the staff report, and generally, if approved, the variances would allow for sidewalks to be six feet attached versus five feet detached. The right-of-way trees are proposed to be installed at every 40 linear feet versus linear, as I kind of reviewed earlier. The variance request also includes an allowance for building encroachments into the sideyard setbacks, and it also requests right-of-width reductions. Note that this table indicates that the right-of-way applies to Trails at Westlake only. Next slide, please. A three-party subdivision improvement agreement establishes public improvement requirements, which may be approved by the city manager. Staff has identified the following key issues, which are discussed in detail in the staff report, in which I listed in the previous slide. Based on the review of the drainage report and associated plans, the seven-lot subdivision development requires an off-site drainage easement to accommodate the drainage plan for the western subdivision. Therefore, Broomfield is requiring a fully executed five-foot drainage easement agreement by and between the developer and the property owner that is associated with Westlake Farms, filing number 1, Replat A Lot 2, and that was the one that was immediately to the east of the seven-lot subdivision. The fully executed easement should be secured by the developer from the adjacent property owner and recorded prior to recordation of the final plaque for the seven-lot subdivision. Next slide, please. The city council reviewed the Trails at Westlake's concept plan. At the time, it was referred to as Farm at Westlake, and that was back on September 29th, 2020. Council indicated concerns about the density of the development, the location of an alley, trail placement of the eastern edge of the development, and being sensitive towards the existing neighborhood development patterns when designing the proposed for the formal development application. The Westlake Farms lot, seven-lot subdivision concept plan was reviewed via the Broomfield Voice from April 10th to May 10th, 2024. Council indicated concerns about density and the product type, suggesting that perhaps townhomes may be more appropriate. They also indicated that the developers should ensure adequate vehicular and pedestrian access into the development. Two neighborhood meetings were held for the Trails. That was the 43-lot subdivision. One was hosted for the Farm at Westlake. Concerns included the proposed smaller lot sizes, the number and placement of the lots within the Trails at Westlake, impacts to the existing road network, and increased traffic noise that would be generated by construction and close proximity of the residential lots in relation to the surrounding neighborhoods. There was also discussion about the city considering purchasing this land for open space, concerns about impacts to wildlife, including coyotes and owls, since there are existing cottonwoods and stands of other trees, which is part of their habitat. Noticing for the public hearing was accomplished per the Broomfield Municipal Code requirements. Next slide, please. And this slide shows the standards for review. Per the Broomfield Municipal Code, it establishes standards for review. The city council determines that the zoning is consistent with the master plan and compatible with the existing and allowable land uses. If so, they may approve the application requests based on the considerations outlined in this slide with respect to the two site development plans and the final plaque. Next slide, please. The Land Use Review Commission voted 5 to 2 to recommend denial of the application. As outlined in the staff report, the LERC identified the following issues related to the application: compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods, traffic impacts, the lack of directed access from Lowell Boulevard to the 43-lot subdivision. Next slide, please. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer questions on the development. Otherwise, representatives from TriPoint Homes and Terracina are also here to discuss the project in more detail. Thank you.
The applicant's presentation? Just as we asked staff to keep their presentations brief, I asked the applicant to be concise as well. Will the applicant's representative please identify themselves for the record before beginning their presentation this evening?
Dan Galasso with TriPoint Homes. Mayor Castrota, Mayor Protem, members of council, thank you for being here tonight, hearing this application. We currently have in the room with us members from TriPoint Home and also our, our design and planning team. We have, from Terracina, we have Jeff Mark and Anthony Files from Action Civil Engineering. We have Troy Denning from, oh, well, Brian Galloway from Galloway Traffic is not, he couldn't make it this evening. And then we have Heidi Gerstung from ERO Resources. From TriPoint, it's myself and Alex Ginter here. So we will try to keep this very brief. Thank you to staff for presenting, you know, kind of the details on the, the site. What we'd like to present on is what we've heard. I was hopeful that all these people were here to support the school, but since they're still here, I suppose that's not the case. So what we've have heard on Broomfield Voice at LERC and online through social media, we have heard that the concern of density. We understand that density is a concern. When you look at these communities, the community to the south was built in the early 70s, early to mid 70s, under different standards, and the community of the north is built in the early to mid 90s. So I do understand that, that many of the people in the audience here have maybe been in their houses for, well, probably not 50 years, but many of these houses have existed for 50 years. Some of them have existed, the rest have existed for 30 years. And so I can understand that there's a lot of concern about these homes that we're going to build, and the lot sizes are smaller. The primary difference, a lot of those homes were built on 70-foot wide lots or 60-foot wide lots, where we're proposing to build on 35 or 45-foot and 50-foot wide lots. Now, that does make a difference. The houses are about the same size, as you compare square footages and living space to what is existing around versus what we're proposing. Very similar size in square footage of living space, just the orientation on the house is different. The houses on the 70-foot lots are very wide, but, but not very deep. And so they give people a lot, lot more front yard and backyard versus the houses we're proposing on the lots will be narrower and deeper on the lot. That's how we kind of achieve a similar square footage to, to the existing neighborhoods. Oh, I'm sorry. Can we advance slides? Sorry. And I did skip the part about TriPoint Homes. We're a national builder. We've been, we were founded in 2009, kind of coming out of the downturn in Southern California. We've built approximately 80,000 houses to date. We've been in Colorado since 2012, and we've delivered a little, little over 2,000 homes in Colorado. So next slide. This is kind of more accurate depiction of our architecture than, than the, the rendering that we had up earlier. These are actual pictures of homes that we've delivered here in Colorado, in Sterling Ranch, and also in Candela's. Next slide. The models we produce here, we, we've got five 35-foot wide models, fit on a 45-foot lot, three elevations each, because those will fit in the 43-lot subdivision. We only have two 40-foot models, two elevations each, because those only fit in the seven-lot subdivision that we're requesting. As you can see, average square footage is 2214. We range from 1906 to 2864, and then you can see approximate sales price, and then also the approximate inclusionary housing sales price that we would anticipate. Next slide. Okay, so we'll get back to here, back to what I was talking about. This makes it a little bit more, a little bit easier to understand what I was saying. You can see the lots to the south here, along King Circle there. Those are all 70-foot wide lots. So very wide, but you can see how the house doesn't take up a ton. It doesn't sit, it sits a little further back on the lot and still has a very big backyard. So they're, they're wide and wide and shallow versus what we're proposing is narrow and deep. On the north, they're 60-foot wide, so little bit different, but, but similar. Next slide. This kind of talks about where we're at PUD-wise, what is, what is the current code, what the new code that was recently passed allows, and what our PUD proposed code is as. And what our PUD proposed code is asking for? Again, back to the density concern, four and a half units per acre is typically considered a low-density product. It's, it's not considered a high-density product. It's not even considered a mid-density product. It's in most municipalities, most areas we work in, four and a half DUs per acre is considered low, low-density. Next, one other point on this. One of the things that it does help with affordability on these homes, when you have a seventy-foot wide lot, that is seventy feet for each lot. That's seventy feet worth of pipe you have to install for water and sewer and storm. That's seventy feet worth of curb and sidewalk times two. And that's also, you know, seventy feet of asphalt. It does bring the cost of a development, you know, drastically increases the cost of a development to go from a forty-five-foot wide lot to a seventy-foot wide lot. You're, you're not quite double, obviously, but it drastically increases it. And that also increases maintenance and replacement costs. That'll be borne by the city and county of Broomfield in the future by the maintenance, by the maintenance team. To increase to those sized lots, those width lots does vastly increase your, your maintenance costs on that. So final point on density, moving on, next slide. This is just another kind of illustration of what our, what our lots are going to look like. As you can see, it kind of gives a good illustration, and we're about, you know, a little, little bit more than one and a half lots to each one of the, the seventy-foot lots to the south of us. It's a little harder to depict on the, on the top. It's a little less than one, one and a half to one, just because we don't have as many neighbors backing to our site there on the north. So that is the first concern we wanted to address that we've heard. The second concern we've heard is obviously traffic impacts. We have done all the traffic studies. We've, you know, we've engaged a professional traffic engineer. They performed traffic counts. They provided all the reports per the DOT, per Broomfield requirements and found there to be minimal impact for traffic. The minimal impact comes to.
Come on now, let, let's be polite to our guests.
I know it's.
Ready, we'll get a chance to speak, but one person at a time.
Yeah, that, I understand that people have feelings about this and, and I can completely understand how it seems like fifty-three would, fifty-three homes would add quite a bit of traffic. However, with the traffic counts and with knowing science and math, it's been proven that that's not the case. We have reports, the reports are all, you know, again, done by a professional engineer who does this for a living.
Okay, excuse me, y'all. We, we have, excuse me, we have decorum here. One person speaks at a time. We have people listening online and they won't be able to understand what's being said. So please respect the person who has the floor and you will have an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
So part of the reason for the determination of minimal, minimal impact, we are not adding any additional connections to any, to the existing neighborhoods. With the exception of the seven-unit subdivision here. We will do one small additional connection on Misty Street here for seven units. The seven units, again, just really are not expected to provide, to, to create that much traffic. And with the addition of the ride-in, ride-out at Lowell Bull, Lowell Boulevard, it would minimize any kind of traffic concerns on Misty Street. The other thing our traffic engineer looked at, the existing Julian Street connection to the south and the existing Briarwood Drive connection. When this subdivision was originally planned and approved, it was anticipated that a road would connect through here, hence, hence the dead-end streets there. So we did analyze to make sure that the number of units here would not exceed the design values of those roads. So those roads were originally designed to accept traffic. And now, you know, thirty to fifty years later, we're just finally making the connections to allow the traffic to get through from Julian Street up to Briarwood. You know, it's anticipated they'll come out Misty or, or go north on Briarwood there. At, at LERC, there was a concern and a question that we filled it regarding stop signs at Briarwood and Misty. We did go double-check that just to make sure, not opposed to install on a stop sign there. It's just traffic counts do not warrant a stop sign at that intersection. And so, you know, per DOT standards, it wouldn't be warranted or per MUTCD standards, wouldn't be warranted to, to install a stop sign there. So that was one thing that we did investigate. And that is, that is, I believe, all of our traffic concern. Comments that we had. The final concern was environmental concerns, as, as we've heard. We also had an environmental company that we engaged to go out and perform a review and report on the environmental out here. That included natural resources. And our wildlife biologist is actually in the room with us this evening. Any and all, read this exact statement here. The project will be developed in compliance with all applicable environmental laws and regulations and is following Broomfield's environmental clearance process. Which ensures environmental and wildlife concerns on the property have been addressed and any identified issues have been mitigated. Obviously, we intend to follow all environmental clearances to make sure that we, we we are not harming any wildlife. You did already hear, we do have a lot of existing trees, large existing trees that have been part of the farm for many years. Many of them are very large cottonwoods that have, you know, massive caliper inch of, of existing trunk. Which contributes to what's, what we're going to be required to mitigate against. With this mitigation, we were required to provide an additional hundred and forty-five caliper inches of tree. Which equates to roughly ninety-two, three-inch trees that will be provided above and beyond what can sustainably be planted in the development. So we are going to plant as many trees as can be sustainably planted in the, in the development. And then we will be part of the mitigation plan that we've agreed to. And the SI will provide an additional ninety-two trees for surrounding parks in, in the Broomfield area. With that, I will turn it over to Jeff Mark.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. As Dan mentioned, my name is Jeff Mark, Principal Terracina Design. We're the planners and landscape architects. I'll make this fairly brief because I think mostly items have been covered, but just wanted to give a little bit of planning and landscape perspective on this. Yeah, we'll keep this plan up that we have right here. You know, when we look at a site and try to figure out how we're going to design it and lay it out. One of the principles we felt was very important here was clustering of housing. So what that does, you could see where we have a group of homes and we have some open space and other group of homes. That clustering creates more meaningful open space or open area within the community. And we strategically figure out where we're going to locate those, some based off of existing trees. Some based off of existing where Westlake has any open space. So that's an item that we think is really important when we're looking at a site plan. With regards to the lot size, as Dan started to mention, but from the landscape perspective. We are now seeing, seeing this size of lot to be pretty common in the area because it reduces yard size. And by doing that, it reduces the amount of what most of us have now is turf in our yard, which uses a lot of water, which is very important now in Colorado. And make sure we are reducing our water use. And so the other item with this is we're seeing most of younger, younger generations and even some older generations are starting to really want to have less maintenance of the yard. So having a smaller lot provides less maintenance in there, less cost. And so this is something that we're really seeing be prevalent within especially the Denver metro area. And then, as Dan mentioned, the preservation or the addition of the ninety-two trees that we will be doing in neighborhood parks. And the preservation of the trees that are on site really started to lead into the design of this. Not to mention the existing road stubs that, as Dan mentioned, are already in here. If we want to go to the next slide, and actually I think we're going to jump over this slide real quick and I'll come back to the very end of this. We go one more, next slide, please. Okay. So I think one of the most important amenities in Colorado that we always hear are trails. Trails are an important amenity here and in Broomfield. You guys have a great trails plan, trails master plan. I know you have great printouts out front of them. You have a good one online. And this site is actually ranked one of Broomfield's highest missing trail length site. So you could see we have these trails that come that are in yellow, coming from the south that are dead-ending into the site. We have a trail in yellow coming over from the west, kind of from over from Lowell that deadens into the site. And then we have the trails that are on the north side of Westlake. Your trails plan does show these dash lines coming through here, always anticipating that these trails would be connected and they're very important connections to the community. If this doesn't get improved, we do still just have these dead-end trail connections that are shown on here. Let's go to the next slide. This just isn't a large minute. So you see these, now they're orange on here. It was yellow ones you saw on the previous one. Those are the existing trails. What are dashed here in red are the proposed connections that we have to those trails to now connect north to south and east to west. Also, what you see highlighted here in this kind of yellow dash is the public land dedication. We are exceeding the requirements in here. And again, we felt that was very important. Again, as we cluster these homes, we take that space and put it in the open space. And so as you can see here, we're really looking at expanding on the Westlake open space. It's probably the primary area where we are putting that public land dedication. If we want to go to the next slide. So this site is the original farm site for the area. The buildings are rundown, they're not salvageable at all. But to pay homage to the existing site, we're going to be, we're proposing creating a pavilion out of some of the materials on, of an existing structure. And rebuilding some of that up on the north side of our cul-de-sac. You kind of see it dashed in red up there that would be on the trails. Next to the existing trails, and we're having a new proposed trail connection into the existing one up there. And then with that, can we just, now I'm going to jump back two slides to the comprehensive plan, sorry. Okay, thank you. So I'm not going to read through all of this, but as Judy presented, this is residential and the comprehensive plan, which is your guiding document to rezoning. When you are rezoning a property, you always want to look back to your comprehensive plan to give you guidance on what that is intended to be in the future. Up here, what I have is we pulled the residential goals from your comprehensive plan. And we feel strongly that we meet these goals or policies. Overall, we're clustering development for land conservation. We're varying lot sizes. We're providing access to parks and trails. We're improving facilities at existing parks by adding the trees, utilizing street sections that match the existing streets to feel like we've been in with the rest of the neighborhood on that. And we're completing the existing road connections for an interconnected network of streets. So with that, we want to thank you again. I don't know if Dan, if you had anything else to add that I missed? And we will definitely be here and open for questions.
All right, thank you both very much.
Yep.
We will now proceed with public comments. Public comments will be limited to ninety minutes total per item. We had a sign-up sheet in the lobby. It looks like we had about eighteen folks sign up. So that list, along with a list of those calling in, will be used to determine the order of speakers. We'll hear from six in person, then one phone caller if, if applicable, until we hit the limits. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record. And limit your comments to three minutes in this first round. For anyone using the call-in service, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak on this item. You also need to know the last three digits of your phone number you're calling from so we can identify and differentiate you between individual callers. So our first speakers will be Shirley Baker, Andrew Rendell, and Carrie Silva. Come on up to the podium.
My name is Shirley Baker. I live in the trails and I live on Briarwood Drive. I am in the second house north of the proposed entry and exit way to the, to the development. Also beside my house is the entrance into the park, the going east. The problem is there is that it needs to be moved. If you're going to have people, all these people in traffic there, there's a fire hydrant there. Visibility is bad. Fifteen feet is, you know, north of the fire hydrant is not, not supposed to be parking because it is a fire hydrant. So my opinion is before anything goes on here and the traffic is in there, if this happens, that you need to move that over and close that entrance at where the fire hydrant is. That way, people going in and out can see, because right now, I, it's an issue with kids, kids and adults coming through that area that do not bother looking. They just zoom in front of you. And then since we're going to have an enormous amount of traffic going down there, I feel that this is very, very important that you move that before the development is finished. Okay, I'm here to express my continued objection to the proposal. Development forty-three homes, ten-point acres of prop, landlocked property between Briarwood Drive and Julian, both winding roads. Okay, this proposal has already been rejected twice. Once years, several years ago, and again recently with, by the Planning Review Committee in a five to two vote. The concerns led to these decisions have unchanged. This land should remain undeveloped, in my opinion, because of the, because we have wildlife there. And it's been fascinating, they, you know, they zoom around there. You hear them, they squeal at night, they're teaching the kids, you know, et cetera. Anyway, this will be permanently lost. It will be fenced off with only one internal road going into the subdivision to the nor, to the east. It is one road way, same way in and same way out with a cul-de-sac at the end. If there's a, an emergency in there, a fire or anything else, how are these people going to get out of there with one road going in and out? That's, that's a concern. If there is a fire or any issues because they do have EVs, they have all the plugins and everything, and they, and batteries burn hot. I know you have water there and all that, but they burn hot. And there's no such thing as a fireproof house, especially when it isn't brick or maybe concrete. That's my opinion. Okay, so. I live two houses down from that area. That's what I told you. Joanne, my neighbor to the north, has no parking whatsoever because her house, basically it butts up to that, that entryway. And the, the big issue here is that the traffic, they're estimating not a problem with it. They're going to have eighty-six to a hundred cars in that area going in and out of that subdivision.
Baker, can you wrap up your thoughts? Sure, three minutes already flew by.
Basically speaking, I would appreciate it if you would not, you know, if you wouldn't do this. But my concern is the park.
Thank you.
Andrew Rendell, the trails. So originally, Misty Street was actually a cul-de-sac before there was the construction of the Pinnacle North neighborhood. When that was constructed, it added fifteen properties to the west of the existing homes and connected Misty Street to Lowell Boulevard. The Pinnacle North subdivision adhered to the required site sizes and setbacks consistent with the existing trails at Westlake Homes. And after twenty years, there is continuity within the two neighborhoods. And the homes not only look similar, they have similar market appeal. The connection between Misty Street and Lowell also allows for the Pinnacle North residents to access their homes from Lowell and has not significantly impacted the traffic on Misty Street. This would not be the case with the current plans to have Misty Street be the main access road, along with Briarwood, for an additional forty-three homes. Between Briarwood and Misty Street, there are seventy-six residences, which would be negatively impacted by the increase in traffic. This would not only be dangerous to the residents who walk, walk their pets, ride their bikes, and the children who walk and ride their bikes to school. It would also have a negative impact on property values due to the properties now, if it comes to pass, being located on a busy, dangerous street. The applicant purchased the property knowing what the current regulations and standards were and has submitted a proposal that is asking for at least eleven variances to existing regulations, which are all associated with decreasing the lot sizes in order to accommodate more homes. There are, there are alternatives available to the applicant which would mitigate the impact of this proposed project on the existing community. Including, but not limited to, purchasing right-of-way easements on the existing driveway for the private residence, which is located in between the parcels, which they are trying to develop. And constructing an access street directly connecting Lowell Boulevard. and constructing an access street directly connecting Lowell Boulevard to the new subdivision. This may also require the construction of a private driveway for the existing residents that then could access be accessed from Misty Court or Misty Street. Smart growth can be accomplished. It has been done in this area before. However, this project as proposed is not an example of adherence to Broomfield regulations. For example, if I was to purchase a vacant lot that was owned for development as a single-family home, and I realized I could make more money by getting the zoning changed and putting a fourplex on that lot, I might be able to ask for that change. However, that does not mean it would be approved based on its impact on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next will be Carrie Silva. And after that, if you want to line up by the podium, it's Lauren Fagan, Jeff Stupak, and Emma Nelson.
Hello, my name is Carrie Silva and I live in the Trails area. My family has lived there for over 25 years. I am a daily user of the park and of the paths. I'm very concerned about the wildlife and the cleanliness of the park and the lake. Currently, we enjoy a wide variety of animals and and all kinds of animals. Construction alone will vastly negatively affect all of these species. And the additional 100 to 500 people to the area will bring increased trash, increased graffiti, night noise, wear and tear on the playground and picnic equipment. However, my biggest concern is the long-term viability and safety of such a plan. One can look at the numbers and say that that many houses can fit on that size of land. However, this development is a long, single street with 43 houses on it and only one way in and one way out. A delivery truck entering Misty from Lowell and then turning onto Briarwood to deliver something to lot number seven will then need to drive down the entire rest of the road and turn around in a cul-de-sac with seven houses surrounding it. And then turn around and go back through all of those houses. If you look at other streets ending in cul-de-sacs, there are typically no more than 10 houses on the street with maybe two or three houses in the cul-de-sac. I'm very concerned about trucks going down that road. It's not just the people who live there. It's all the delivery trucks, all of the construction vehicles, all of the other uh vehicles that will need to go down that road. Uh, also at the southeast elbow of this long street is a walking trail that exists that exits right onto the street to continue to the park. Every vehicle going in and out of this development will need to go by this crossway. Will there be a safety walkway for all the young families with their strollers, bikes, young kids speeding on their electric scooters, and the elderly crossing the street here? Will there be speed bumps to slow down the delivery trucks trying to meet their deadlines as they traverse up and down this long, narrow street? How safe will it be for vehicles backing out of their own driveways with reduced lot size and limited street parking? Will there be enough room for large pickup trucks, work trucks, and SUVs that all the houses will need to park by their houses, especially on trash day? Will growing families have enough room for their teenage drivers? Delivery trucks, roofing semis, home improvement flatbeds, landscape trucks, etc. Will need to park in the street from time to time to do their job? How will all the other vehicles get by and turn around in this cul-de-sac safely? What happens during emergencies? What happens during evacuation orders? This should be at the top of our concern as we're looking at Arvada citizens who are currently battling over evacuation safety concerns during their recent wildfires. Many homeowners in the surrounding neighbors neighborhood have lived here 25 to 50-plus years.
Can you please wrap up, Ms. Silva?
All right.
Your time's.
So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Lauren Fagan.
Um, hi, my name is Lauren Fagan and I'm a Westlake resident and homeowner who backs directly up to the farm at Westlake property. My home was 800 square feet, so it's nothing like the proposed houses that these people talked about in these other neighborhoods. Um, I am extremely against this development. I bought my home 12 years ago, partly because it was next to a peaceful farm. I have seen red-tailed hawks, bald eagles, snowy eagrets, blue herons, coyotes, foxes, snakes, and prairie dogs, all that reside on that property. I think the destruction of more wildlife habitat habitat in Broomfield too, build even more stale cookie cutter style high-density homes that aren't even affordable for the average Colorado family is appalling. This is not a regular empty street corner housing development. It is a lollipop, landlocked space that can't even be seen from any road. These houses will be plopped right in the middle of two very established existing neighborhoods built in the 70s and 90s. The lot sizes and housing setbacks of the of this development are not even comparable to surrounding properties. It will destroy my view of the mountains, my peace, my privacy, and that of all my neighbors as well. Many of us in Trails and Westlake recreate around the Westlake pond daily, which is adjacent to this property. We walk our dogs, we run, we ride our bikes, we play with our kids, fish, go sledding. It's a peaceful place for people to escape after a long day of school and work. Building on that property will be such a disturbance to so many people's way of life. The noise, I personally work from home, the increased traffic, construction, the increased traffic, construction and daily traffic flow, potential flooding and drainage issues, the obvious fire hazards because the homes are so close together, and building even more houses after raising water rates for the entire town due to current strain on city infrastructure is insanity. There are way too many houses being proposed to propose for this space, especially when this property would be an amazing extension of the already existing open space. Please consider all the residents in Westlake and Trails who are longtime taxpayers and homeowners who have contributed to the city for years before allowing these out-of-state developers to come in and completely destroy the ecosystem and the history that has been in place on that land for decades. Enough of the overdevelopment in Broomfield. This is not a typical NIMBY complaint because this development is different. It is way different. Listen to your constituents and do the right thing and reject this plan. It was already denied by the Land Use Committee. Force these developers to decrease the number of homes or buy back the land from them and use it as open space or some kind of community facility like a disc golf course or a bike park or literally anything other than the condensed housing that is being proposed there. Thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you. Next, please. We we do have a lot of folks that need to speak, so the applause just adds more time so to the whole process. So keep it down. Yeah.
Uh, good evening. My name is Jeff Stupak. I'm a homeowner with my partner here in the Westlake uh neighborhood. And I just, I'm here to register my opposition to this proposed development. I don't know how many days, how many hours I've spent walking in Trails Park South with my dog. It's one of our favorite spots. And it is just a beautiful space with massive cottonwoods, a gorgeous pond there, and seeing the farm there is actually great. Like other people have mentioned, I've seen coyotes, prairie dogs, foxes, all sorts of birds. Um, and it would really be a shame to lose out on all of that wildlife. And especially with the trees, like the idea of replacing massive old cottonwoods with three-inch replacements. Um, it doesn't really seem like an actual, uh, you know, any sort of compensation for that. Um, you know, those trees are, I don't know how old, but uh the other thing I wanted to raise was the inclusive homes. During the presentation, they said they would be about 500,000. And I assume 500 is probably low um for what they would actually market for. To afford a $500,000 home, you need to make at least 120 to 160,000 dollars a year. The median income, median household income in Colorado is 90,000. It's a bit higher in Broomfield specifically, but 112,000. So fully more than half of the population in Broomfield would not be able to afford any of the six homes that are being proposed. And if you're thinking more broadly about Colorado, it's even a larger percentage of the people who couldn't afford these places. So I think, you know, the idea that we're doing inclusive uh housing is a bit of a misnomer when uh so much of the population is would be priced out even on the less expensive homes. And that's all I had to say. So I'll save some time for other folks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Emma Nelson. And after that, if y'all want to line up, is Rob Salazar, Dana DeFries, and James Pine.
Hi, everyone. Um, so as my partner said, uh, live in Westlake, um, just up the road from the proposed development. Um, I'm also a wildlife ecologist. Um, and I just kind of want to highlight that um what the applicants mentioned, right? That uh the proposed development meets all the legal requirements. That is a very and deliberately um not detailed answer. And so I think it's really important, I mean, even on the other side with the big park by our recreation center, right? Like the the educational material explicitly says that our community wanted to like protect that land for the prairie dogs. And I think that is incredible. Like that makes me so happy and proud to be a Broomfield resident. I can get really geeky about wildlife, so apologies, everyone. But um, there is a colony of prairie dogs in that area. Um, they're thriving. Um, they're keystone species. I know that you all in Broomfield are working on some uh short grass prairie restoration, which I love and I'm super, super excited about. And there's just all this opportunity to continue um what we're doing here in in Colorado and Broomfield to restore our native um habitat, including these incredibly important keystone species. And I was also thinking about the presentation on the school. Um, it would be incredible to see Broomfield buy the land and have it as a community space. I was even thinking like a community garden. We could grow food for the school. I mean, it's not that far from legacy. Like, and just be able to support our communities in these other ways by utilizing this public land. If we were able to do that, right? Like, I think there's just such an incredible way that we could use this property not only like for the people who already live here, but to support our neighbors in their needs, right? Bring people outside, grow food for ourselves, for our community, and for the people who need it. So um just encourage you all to um vote against uh this proposal. And um just thank you all for you don't doing the the restoration work that you're doing. And um I hope to be able to continue to see the amazing wildlife and habitat that's there right now. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me get up here. Um, Rob Salazar, I live in Westlake subdivision, basically on the east side. Uh, I have a lot of friends that live in the Trails. I've been over there. I've been living there basically. This is my 28th year. Seen a lot of change in Broomfield. But given the opportunity uh for us to basically have 50 single-family homes would not only, I mean, basically if you think there's three people in each house, there's 150 people. You know, it's going to add vehicles, people's recreation vehicles, motorcycles, boats, etc. If it did pass, you know, there there's problems and issues of uh let's say the original plan would change and they become multifamily homes. I don't know exactly what the law part of that would be, but that's things change, just like uh the reservoir we were supposed to have never happened. So we got water problems already. Um, we got ordinances, basically. Uh, you can only water every three days. I can't garden anymore. Yeah, it basically uh everything's going down and adding this issue isn't helping anything because, oh, maybe there's not going to be uh more water usage because they're going to zero-scape and put rocks or what have you. But there's still people living there that are going to use the water. Their animals need to drink. They're still going to have water pipes to their houses. They're going to flush toilets. There's hot water heaters. They're going to shower. They're still going to use water. So that's a lot of water. You start adding that the schools are going to get overturned or, you know, overfull the, you know, the growth right now is already tremendous. And uh, you know, it just the the hike of the water, uh, you know, water usage, you got to pay more, pay more. Maybe if you use more, you're on the second tier, third tier, you know, it's a lot of BS. But you know, the trash company stuff thing, that's the same thing. You're going to have to, all these people moving in there are going to have to comply to their own to a trash company that nobody wanted to use, you know, unless some of you guys might, but I don't agree with that. You know, there's going to be a lot of problems with uh with the people and the congestion. I know I'm repeating a lot of stuff that everybody already talked about, but the traffic, the noise, the animals, the wildlife. I mean, it's just the taxes, our property taxes is going to go up. I just paid my house off. And I don't need to pay more taxes because this proposed $500,000 home that is probably going to be closer to 700,000 is going to make property tax go up. And everybody in here is going to be paying more. And that's basically it. And I I heard someone once say, or I read it, uh, let's keep the field in Broomfield. And I really agree with that.
All right. Thank you very much. Next is Dana DeFries.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, good evening, Ms. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I'm Dana DeFries and I have lived on Briarwood Drive for 25 years and love the neighborhood, love the little lake that we have. And I would like to just um express my concerns about this proposal and my opposition to it. And um namely because that the value of the quality of life in our neighborhood and living in Broomfield is far more important than the profit made by squeezing extremely dense and expensive homes in an already tiny um plot of land. Is is just um the value of our life there is far greater than any profit that can be made. This proposal has too many homes. It's already a dense neighborhood. We don't need more denseness. I'm really concerned about what everybody else has already spoken about about the traffic. I know there's been studies done, whatever study that was. I know that there's been landscaping um approval, and it's just not right. Uh, Briarwood Drive is very busy. There's already a ton of traffic. There's a lot of speed on that drive. 100 more cars a day plus the car plus the trucks and trash and everything else that comes with living is just too much. I have concern about losing an original founding property in Broomfield. Um, there's got to be some historic value to this precious little spot of land. Um, we opened this meeting by acknowledging the ancestral lands. Please continue this value by keeping this land open and some open land in Broomfield in this tiny area. Um, I'm concerned about losing the open space, the vegetation, the trees, the grasses, the fields, the animals, the birds, the wildlife that comes with it. I was sick a few years ago and was able to finally get enough energy to go from my home and make it to the top of the hill where you can sit on a bench and overlook the lake. And the amount of peace that I felt from one, being able to get there and two, just sitting there and enjoying the beauty of the open space behind us and the land. It was just, it's a miracle to me and it's precious to me to have this land there. There are better places in Broomfield for this kind of development. It's not in our neighborhood, not in the Trails, not in Westlake. And um we were celebrating Broomfield Days this year with the theme of City with a Heart. Please honor the hearts and the wishes of our current residents in this neighborhood. And don't allow the building on this plot of land, leave it to Broomfield. Connect the Trails, leave the land open. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is going to be Larry James Pine. And after that, if y'all want to line up, it's Larry Weaver, Sarah Ivy Leone, and Andrew Leone. I hope I said that right.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Again, my name is James Pine. Um, I live in the Red Leaf neighborhood, so I'm not even in Westlake. And I still feel very strongly about what everyone has said so far this evening. Uh, I was the former vice chair of the HOA, so I'm very, you know, very familiar with the community um and very involved with the community. It just the impact of the the 50 new homes across, um, you know, these filings will inevitably um increase local traffic. Um, I know that there was some outbreaks earlier um with some laughter regarding um, you know, traffic and how that traffic study revealed that it's not going to impact something. Evidently, that person does not live in our area. So um just the our local, you know, our local connector roads are intersections. They're not designed for this additional load of the project. I currently work in transportation and logistics and I handle um a lot of freight for both companies, big and small. So I'm very familiar with um the different kinds of uh, you know, what does it say? So I'm very familiar with the different kinds of, well, just say trucks, whether they be reefer trucks, whether they be flatbeds, whether they be step decks, et cetera. All of these can legally go up to 80,000 pounds total weight, typically up to about 48,000 pounds just load weight. I don't know how many of you in this room remember when we had the road reconstruction going from 120th all the way up on Lowell, all the way to 136. And the first phase of that project took basically about a year. And I understand it had a lot to do with drainage, everything else. Luckily, the second part of that project was moved a lot, you know, swifter. So I think all of us realize just logistically, not even including, because I'm not, I'm not going to rehash what everyone is saying, you know, when it comes to the concern about the density, once that is built, that's like phase three. I'm thinking, well, what's phase one? You know, what is our traffic going to be like with 53-foot flatbeds, moving construction equipment? What kind of damage is that going to do to our infrastructure? We've spent all that time, you know, with, you know, just trying to rebuild that one piece of Lowell. What is the infrastructure damage, the weight just from those trucks that's going to happen? And who's going to pay for that? I mean, we, we paid for that. We paid for it from our tax dollars, you know, we paid for it, you know, with our property taxes. We paid for it in time inconvenience. So again, I'm not going to rehash what everybody has already said because I totally understand the Westlake, you know, point of view. But let's just look at the logistical infrastructure damage that could be caused by this project. Thank you and appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pine. Next is Mr. Weaver. And do we have Sarah and Andrew Leone? Did they stay or Sarah and Andrew? You're next. Yes, sir.
Well, Larry Weaver, I live on Trails and have been there for quite some time. And I just want to thank everybody in here for giving me just a couple of minutes just to speak about this. But my main concerns, and I hope you turn this project down, is the safety and well-being of the community in that area, just due to, to the congestion. If something goes wrong with one of those houses, getting the fire crew in there and whatnot is going to be very difficult. So there's a lot more to be considered than, you know, just getting in and out of that property. I myself, you know, and everybody's mentioned it, I'm, when I work late at night coming home, I sit through some of the stoplights two or three times. Yeah, you know, so that's, that's really shows what the traffic level has done since we, you know, my family just, you know, moved out here. But anyway, please really consider all of the safety factors, things like that. And, and I just hope you vote the right way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weaver. Last call for Sarah Leone, Andrew Leone. Are they here? Guess not. We're going to move on. Our next speakers, are you Sarah?
I'm done.
Oh, okay. Y'all are, okay. So then after them, I have Stephanie Doyle, Scott Fowler and Valerie Major.
I'm Stephanie Doyle and I live in the trails. I back directly to the farm. I'm here today to respectfully urge you to uphold the Land Use Commission's decision to deny the proposed infill development. The commission's denial is not only justified, it is necessary. Their decision reflects a careful review of the facts, community input, the numerous variances requested and the long-term consequences of this project. Overturning it would ignore both expert judgment and the voices of the people most affected. Let me be clear, this land is not just empty space waiting to be built on. It is home to a rich ecosystem, including federally protected birds of prey such as red-tailed hawks and great horned owls, as well as foxes, coyotes and other species that rely on this habitat for survival. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. We cannot claim to value sustainability while approving development that erases natural ecosystems. Additionally, as previous mentioned, previously mentioned, during the numerous meetings on this application, this long, this land has long been identified by the city as a potential for open space. It was not always intended to be built on, no matter how many times the developer tries to tell that lie. Preserving it would directly support the city and county's goal of maintaining 40% open lands. Its location, surrounded by existing neighborhoods, makes it ideal for conservation, not dense development. Beyond the environmental concerns, there is a glaring logistical issue. There is no viable access point for construction. Forcing access through narrow residential streets would not only be disruptive, it would be dangerous. Heavy machinery and construction traffic would pose serious risks to pedestrians, children, cyclists and wildlife. And the impacts will not stop once construction ends. Our neighborhood roads were never designed to handle the increased traffic this development would bring. This includes more wear and tear and more safety hazards for everyone who lives here. The traffic study conducted failed to assess impacts on Misty Street, Briarwood Drive or King Circle, which lead to the only two access points for the trails at Westlake Development. The proposed development would be a significant impact to those two quiet, or to those quiet neighborhood roads. And it would lead to numerous cars that will undeniably park on the road because of the proposed front setbacks that will not provide suspicious sufficient space for a car to park on the driveway without encroaching onto the sidewalk or the public right of way. This just leads to additional safety concerns on those roads. Turning briefly to affordability, the projected home prices for this development are far above the area's average home value. This isn't about creating accessible housing, it's about prioritizing and maximizing profit. These homes won't serve the families who need them most. Instead, they'll accelerate displacement and erode the diversity that makes our community strong. This is not smart growth. This is not responsible planning. This is a project that benefits a very few minor at the expense of many. I urge you to stand with the Land Use Commission, with the residents of the existing neighborhoods, your constituents who oppose this development, and with the principles of thoughtful community center development, please deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Scott Fowler is next, but it, I mean, you guys are, but you're right after your Valerie, right? That's okay.
Scott Fowler, I live on Briarwood Drive. My main concern, and again, it's been touched on several times, is traffic. So again, whatever, 40, 50 houses, you're going to have two to three cars per house and all of it's going to flood out onto existing, existing roads that aren't designed to carry that additional traffic. So if you look instead of this, if you bring up that plot plan, you would see that the access point down into Westlake through Julian is very convoluted. It's not a straight shot. Most people are going to head out onto Briarwood Drive or onto Misty Street. That's again, you're, now you're pushing traffic into one certain direction. It seems like the way this whole development has been set up is you've got a private residence who wants to subdivide, which gives that person payment for their land. And you're going to develop around that private residence. If this was truly going to be a development that again, was associated with Pinnacle North or whatever it's called, that house would go away. Development would be planned from scratch, including all of the, all of the land. This is being worked around one existing build or one existing residence, which is causing again, that traffic to go out where it shouldn't, because if that residence wasn't there, you'd have a two-way street right onto Lowell. So biggest issue is traffic. And again, I would, I would state again, it's been brought up a couple of times, but yes, we've been taxpayers in that area for 20-plus years. Again, many people there longer. We didn't know that this plan would ever go forward. And again, the Pinnacle North kind of took away a lot of the existing open space there. So we thought, hey, that's done. So I would, I would refuse this development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Valerie Major, and then our last three speakers signed up are Sean Seifarth, Matt Kadri and Carla Pickens. If you want to go ahead and line up by the podium, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Valerie Major and I live in Westlake and I use the lake every day. Me and my mom walk the lake every day. I have worked as a zookeeper for the Denver Zoo and I currently work as a GIS analyst specializing in wildfire and urban conflagration risk. I want to speak tonight about why this farmstead should not be turned into dense housing. First, I want to speak to the ecological impact. Prairie dogs may seem small, but they are a keystone species. Their colonies sustain foxes, coyotes, hawks, owls and snakes, the entire food web of this area. If development clears them out, those predators won't disappear. They'll simply move into our neighborhood and then it's house cats, small pets and backyard animals that pay the price. This isn't about pests, it's about balance. And once it's gone, it's gone forever. And second, I'd like to speak to the fire risk. In Colorado, we know how quickly fire spreads. Dense housing, homes packed too close together, this creates conditions where one ignition can become a chain reaction, a true urban conflagration. Without buffers, these clusters of homes essentially become tinderboxes. This isn't just a land use decision, this is a public safety risk. And third, infrastructure. More homes means more cars on the roads that weren't designed for heavy traffic. That brings longer commutes, more accidents and harder access for emergency vehicles when seconds matter. Schools, healthcare and utilities also feel the strain long before tax revenue catches up. Fourth, I'd like to talk about the pollution and the resources. Increased traffic worsens, worsens air quality, adds noise and increases greenhouse gas emissions. More people means more demand for already stressed water supplies, especially in drought-prone Colorado. Finally, it's a quality of life issue. This farmstead is more than just land. It's heritage, it's open space, it's a buffer that supports both wildlife and human well-being. When we pave it over, we're not just losing fields, we're losing cleaner air, we're losing quieter nights, safer communities and the chance to grow in a way that respects the land that we depend on. I'm not saying that we shouldn't grow, but growth without foresight is just sprawl. If we ignore ecology, wildfire danger, infrastructure and community identity, we're not building a stronger city, we're setting ourselves up for preventable harm. I urge you to think carefully before approving this plan. Some costs won't show up in a developer's spreadsheet, but they'll show up in our neighborhoods, in our safety and in our quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Major. Next, Sean, did I say it right?
Seifarth?
Seifarth.
Seifarth. Come on down.
All right. I'll keep this pretty brief. So we live in the private residence just east of the seven homes that's proposed to be developed. There's a couple of things that have yet to be finished or finalized, especially around the easements, both north and east on our property. So I think there's some outstanding work there that still would need to be done. We have not reached an agreement there with the developers. And I would recommend to the council that you really listen to my neighbors and the people that are here tonight and that you take that to heart as you make your decision. It is a special place to live. Our home has been there since 1956 and we've spent a lot of time and love trying to polish it and make it into something that's a place that we can call home. So with that being said, I just would highly recommend you just really take that, that time and hear what the sentiment of the public has been. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Kadri?
Kadri, yes.
Kadri, don't.
I live in Country Vista with my partner. We've lived there for a few years now. And my main concern is the wildlife and the, the open space, like others have voiced, you know, cutting down old trees and replacing them with little skinny, non-native, most likely non-native trees, I assume, is not a replacement by any means. An old growth tree can provide 100,000 liters of oxygen per year for residents. It provides shade and root structure that prevents flooding, mitigates flooding. The amount of animals like other people have talked about that it supports, I mean, it's, it's exponential what these trees do and to cut those down is, is a travesty. Also, others have mentioned water. I think that's a big, important thing. You know, you guys have cut back our, our water use. We've got a problem that's only going to grow over the next 50 years with water shortages. And the average single-family home can use 100,000, 160,000 to 160,000 gallons per year of water. So you're talking millions of gallons of water that you're going to be adding to our, our already strained system. And, and that's all I really have to say.
Thank you very much. Carla Pickens?
Hi, my name is Carla Pickens. I've lived on Briarwood Drive for almost 20 years. I too am opposed to this development. Many things have been said, so I apologize if I repeat myself. I'd kind of like to look, work backwards from some of the selling points from the company. One of their selling points was trails. This would be a great development for trails. I believe the city of Broomfield has created mini trails without any additional housing. So I think we can make some trails to enjoy this wildlife that's there already and we can connect those trails without this housing development. I think there's some argument about whether there was going to be houses there, there wasn't. I will say, as long as I've been here, I don't know who's right and who's wrong. I think if there was going to be a development there, it was based on previous variances. Our variances have changed very, have changed a lot over the years and now we're asking for exceptions to those variances. So if there was anticipation for houses to be there, it was not based on this condensed housing. It was based on previous housing where you had less houses in more space. I think it's important, I heard a lot about studies. I think it's important to realize that as hard as companies try, when they're doing their own studies to favor their profits, their studies are going to be in their favor. It's hard to find that. If there were some independent studies, I could understand that. But they have a goal here and I appreciate that. They have a company to run, they have employees, they have a profit to make. I respect that. However, that relates to the studies. Those studies are going to say, yes, let's do this, it's going to be a good thing. I think that needs to be taken into consideration. I appreciate the planning committee voting no. I hope you take that into consideration. The last thing I would like to say is to all the city council members, to the people of the company and the person from the planning development, would you live in this area with these condensed homes? Would you be willing to live where trying to take a square peg into a round hole where it's not going to fit and it's going to upset a lot of people and cause some serious environmental congestion, traffic, water issues across the board? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Well, that is all the people that signed up, but if anyone has changed their mind or decided that they would like to speak, you're welcome to come on up to the podium. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and neighborhood for the record.
My name is Russ Young and I live on 133rd Avenue and I've been there for quite a while and I've got multiple comments. I'm an expert in project and program management, been all over the country speaking on these topics. And I'd like to bring to your attention some obfuscation in the presentation that the developers made. Number one, when they developed, when they stated that people went smaller yards, that's not necessarily correct. You can do a simple Google search discovering whether or not homeowners prefer small versus large yards in Colorado. And you'll see a section where they declared that there was, people want small yards. It turns out that the other half of that population wants larger yards, up to an acre. So consider that. Number two, they mentioned traffic and so forth. Who in here thought about snow? Snow driving, snow accidents, snow removal, snow handling in general. It happened in Colorado. If you're coming from California, you don't have to worry so much about it, but in Colorado you do. And then a final point, when we consider the overall population of animals, Broomfield specifically set aside a very large area to the west of the Paldera Recreation Center for prairie dogs and critters that live in that region around prairie dogs. This is something that Broomfield explicitly sets aside. And yet I want to ask the developers a simple question. How many of the 100 or so prairie dogs will die as a result of this development? What are you going to do with the prairie dogs? Nobody brought that up. What's going to happen to the prairie dogs that are still there? What's going to happen to the prairie dogs that are still there? What are you going to do about the other species that prey on the prairie dogs? You haven't thought about any of that. And so far as the development density, the traffic, the snow, all these logisticals, as the gentleman prior said, it's a big darn deal. So please, I recommend that you oppose this development as is, proposed, and that they either come back with a better proposal, or we go to Plan B. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to go ahead and take our 10-minute recess since everybody's had a chance to speak on the resident side. And then we'll come back and give the applicant a chance to respond to some of the comments and questions from council. So bear with us, it's 8:31, we'll be back at 8:41. We're just going to take a 10-minute recess. Thank you. Did we lose you? It was going so well. Is he still, he's still there, right?
He is, he muted himself. There we go.
You back?
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Sorry, I got muted somehow, sorry. Or I got muted, apologies. And so understandably, they're trying to make that light. They take the tangents. And if you noticed in the slide that we spent a lot on, that was the master plat, there is a entrance, a new entrance that is getting cut in to Misty Street just to the east of Lowell, right adjacent to the church entrance. That church entrance is extremely active, which is great that they have such an active church, and it's not just on Sundays. But the ins and outs of people trying to make it there, the people trying to make the street, and even add, or make the light, and even adding just seven to 14 or 21 cars coming out periodically, it is going to create an incident so close to the intersection of Misty and Lowell. I know personally, I have almost caused an accident coming out of my driveway, backing out despite looking because people come down the street so quickly. Visibility is just limited. The other point about this entrance or that intersection there is people already cross to the south side of the street when they're going to access Derda, the Commons Park or the open space there, because they want to avoid that church crossing. And at you, we are now taking away the unobstructed access, at least to Lowell, to where you get a dedicated crossing. So people cross over to the south side to avoid one additional crossing that doesn't have a stop sign or light, but they do that for their safety. We were taking that away from all of those pedestrians and the kids, especially in the summer, that go back and forth over there. I appreciate your time, and so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank all of you for being here to participate and give us your feedback. I'm going to go ahead and go to the applicant and see if you have any final comments.
Can we possibly pull up the, one of the site plans again?
Give us a second.
Maybe while we're waiting on that, we could probably hit on a couple of the other items that we have here. I know we've heard a lot about this site being open space. Again, this is private property, it isn't actual open space right now. It is private property that does exist there. And about the city of Broomfield purchasing it, which I think, you know, that'd be great for the city of Broomfield to purchase this. But I also am putting my hat on, and I do live in the area, and I have a lot of friends who live in Broomfield, and I talk about this, our 78,000 other residents in Broomfield. If this purchase happens, it would be paying for this property back here, the connections to it, the cleanup of it compared to today where we do have somebody, tri-point, who's willing to come in and do 42% of the site preserve, construct the trails on their dime, clean up the site, and also maintain it in the long run. So I appreciate everybody here tonight, but I also want to thank for the rest of the residents of Broomfield. I think on another item here, let's see, we heard, okay. With regards to fire, I know we did hear comments on fire and safety. What this does is we do go through a review process with the fire department. We have this cul-de-sac that is ending over here. They do review it, understand the distances, we meet all fire criteria. I know it's very important for us, for everybody, when we look at a site. These homes, I believe probably the only homes in the neighborhood that will be sprinkled. So to, as when it comes to safety and fire, these homes that are coming in will be sprinkled. Another item to mention when it comes to fire connectivity and safety is that, again, Julian Street, the stub that exists into our site, and Briarwood to the north, that stub that exists into our site, is actually going to create another emergency access point for both communities to connect through. So right now, Briarwood and Gold Court, all of those homes are on a long dead end. And the intent was this, someday, again, as these roads are stubbed to connect through. So when it comes to fire safety, just want to make sure and clear that this will actually enhance the amount of fire safety through the two communities. And another way to get through the two communities, if something happens on Lowell, for example, and there's something that really serious happens there, this creates another emergency point. I think maybe Dan, if you wanted to hit on some of the traffic numbers?
Yeah, I wanted to touch on, I wanted to touch on the statement about the traffic engineer and the reports that are generated by the traffic engineer. Just so everybody knows, that is an independent traffic engineer. We do contract with them. It is a professional engineer who has a professional license at risk. They're not in the practice of risking their livelihood to manufacture a report for us. They just, they won't do it. I wouldn't do it. I would assume most of the people in this room would not do it. It's just not worth your reputation and your livelihood to manufacture a report to enhance, you know, a traffic report for a developer. So along those lines, though, they did do, he doesn't live in your neighborhood, you guys are correct about that. But the, but the study was done in the neighborhood. There were devices that were placed, there were traffic counts that were taken. So the study was done in your neighborhood. This is actual, real data that was provided based on the study. Based on the study, with our included, with our included traffic, with our traffic included from the 43 and the 7, it would, it would take the capacity of Misty Street to 31.95%. So this Misty would still be operating at less than a third of its design capacity. So that's, I understand it feels different, and I apologize, and I understand that y'all have been living here a long time, and here we come in, wanted to do something new. And so I understand the strong feelings, and what a great amount of passion y'all have to be here. And so I, I understand the strong feelings and what a great amount of passion y'all have to be here tonight to, to talk about this. But based on the study, the math is less than a third of the capacity of the street will be used with our included traffic. As you go south into the neighborhood in the south on Julian, it's a, with our included traffic, it'll be at 28.95% capacity. So again, much less than a third of the design capacity for this street will be used with our included traffic. So that's, that's what I wanted to touch on traffic wise. For the gentleman who questioned our thoughts on the prairie dogs, we do intend to live trap and relocate the prairie dogs. That is our, that is our plan. That has been our plan, working with the gentleman out of Longmont currently on a, on a Longmont site to trap and relocate these, the prairie dogs there. That plan includes relocating them to a site in Pueblo that's used to, to, as a ferret preserve. So that also helps with environmentally. Regarding affordable housing, there was a lot of question about the affordable housing that was, that was out there and what the affordable housing will be sold for. And I just wanted to clarify that the affordable housing is, that's governed by the ordinance that, that will be following. So those prices are set at 100% of the AMI of the person that's purchasing them. So that dictates the price of that home. We don't dictate the price of that home. The ordinance and, and the area median income dictates the price of that home. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. It's not, not that we're saying we're going to do these six homes and then we're going to sell them for, you know, market rate. We, we won't. And regarding property taxes being increased to cover those, that's also not how the ordinance is set up. What, what does end up happening is the market rate housing supplements those six houses. So the, the, the rest of the housing, the other 44 units that'll be sold in this community, will pay for that, those six units to be at that 100% AMI price. Regarding, you know, I, I don't, we did talk about the fire sprinklers. We did talk about how there's concern with fire on these. As Jeff stated, this has all been reviewed by, by fire and by engineering and found to be appropriate. In addition, we're including the fire sprinklers and construction standards have increased dramatically since the mid 1970s when these homes were built. Those construction standards do, do allow for tighter side setbacks because of the fire rating on the sides of the houses that's required and because of the different materials that we use on the houses. It does allow for that, those tighter side setbacks in almost every municipality we do business in. Sure.
One other item will be, and I know we've heard this in the past, is why didn't we not just connect to Lowell? The reason for that is that because of the intersection spacing between Misty Street and where you can see where we do have that one-way access that is the ride out is extremely close to each other. All traffic standards really set that distance that intersections can be apart. And we're like 250 feet on an arterial road like this. If that did connect there, it would create an extremely dangerous condition right there in that spot. So just kind of answer the question of why didn't we just go out there? That is the reason why that connection does not happen. I think.
I think one final point of clarification is, you know, somebody mentioned that we bought this and, and now we're trying to change things. We haven't, TriPoint hasn't purchased this land. We're under contract to purchase this land contingent upon approvals. The approvals we're seeking tonight, we haven't purchased this land. And I would tell you that should we get denied, this, this project is on the ragged edge of being viable as it is. Should we get denied, removing units is not an option. To remove units makes the project not work. It makes it so it just goes away. These 50 houses just go away. And I, I know there's people that are happy about that and I, and I understand everybody in this room likely has a house and lives here. There are a lot of people who don't have houses and would like to live here. They'd like to be part of the, part of your Broomfield days. What a, what a wonderful thing. And such a passionate community. They'd like to be part of such a passionate community. And so that's 50 houses, 50 families that can't be part of that because there's nowhere for them to go. So that's, I, I understand everybody's happy. Look, I would be, I would be, I would be upset at this if, if I lived here and I'd lived here for 23 years and there was going to be change behind me. I would, I would likely be unhappy as well. So I understand that. But yeah, we, we don't. And we don't own it. Any less units, we likely just go away. And, and this doesn't happen. Under the new recently passed zoning code, I could see this coming back for another requested zoning and becoming much more dense than this. It, a, a property this size typically wants to be more dense than this. It's just, it's the size, it's an infill. Usually a property this size in an infill is something we would target for much higher density than this. Again, at, at 4.2, it's, that's considered low density in most communities. That's my final comments.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen. So now we're going to go to questions from council. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion and the time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item is later. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to applicants. You answered a number of my questions off my list just now. But I wanted to ask you, since you've built 80,000 homes, you said, I assume you've done infill projects before. Correct? You were just talking about infill.
Yes, yes, sir.
So, and, and they're always difficult because of the surrounding neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
In this case particularly, it's like a thumb. It's not on the edge. It's right in the middle. So that said, why go so dense, knowing this is the opposition to get the council five years? I think the previous proposal was even more dense, just as you mentioned. And the council said less dense and Lurk has said less dense. So why are we still far more dense than like the pinnacle addition that matched the neighborhood?
That, I mean, less dense than this would not, the pro forma wouldn't work. Sorry, the math wouldn't work on this. It would, it would not allow us to perform the development and, and sell houses at a reasonable rate.
Simply a matter of math.
It's simply a matter.
Size of the acreage.
Yes. And, and as we talk about affordable housing and making these affordable and we, we hear pushback on them being, you know, in the $700,000 range for market, should you go less dense, you provide a bigger lot, which costs more and you provide, likely provide a bigger house, now you're looking at homes in the million to million and a half range.
So when you, when you look at pinnacle, how were they able to do that? Because they added, I don't know, 12 homes, whatever it is, that's the same size as the trails in the other neighborhoods right around it.
I'm not familiar with when pinnacle was built. I would assume it was in the mid 90s. It was different.
It's more recent than that, 2000s.
2009. We've seen dramatic increases in costs since 2009, both in land development and, and cost of the construction of the home.
On the area on the west side, I was actually, I was anticipating it would be more dense. So I was interested why you decided homes with larger lots than say townhomes, considering it's on the arterial, it's on Lowell and has less traffic impact, as you noted.
It was what would fit. And if we went with a townhome proposal there, obviously we'd have as much or more pushback than we have tonight. And it wouldn't really, it doesn't really lend itself to, at least for us, to do townhomes on that. We would end up with 12 or 15 units. And it's, it's just doesn't really lend itself to that.
I know we've had a lot of debate about traffic. And you just cited design capacity of the road. I think you said would go to 35.9 on Misty if you built. What is it now? 10?
Do you have that number? It's, it's currently at 23. So we go from 23% to 31.95%.
A 30% increase. If I can do, I can't do math. Somebody please help me, but it sounds like a third more.
25% increase.
25? It's close. Thank you. I'm not a math major. Do we have a consensus on the percentage increase?
It's nearly 30%.
30%, okay.
Yeah. We're increasing by, we're increasing by roughly 7% on two and a half.
To one person speaking at a time, please. Thank you.
I think we had a consensus of 25% increase. And I think the other one you said was 28.9 was, and that was which street?
Uh, that's Julian and the, and the street leading, what is the other street? Briarwood leading out of the south.
And is it 20% as well? Okay. Obviously I know the, the difference is not so much numbers, but just the aesthetic. It's a quiet street. So you're adding, what is it, 172 parking spaces? So we didn't expect that many more cars. And it's, the one interesting about, there's no transit and there's no access to Lowell directly. So my, I do have a concern about the fact that it will be spilled into these streets with 20% capacity, which means they're not used to much traffic. So the impact is felt pretty high. Can you address the variance for, I think the road was slightly narrower?
Yes, that's to match existing right of way with.
Okay.
So we're, we're just matching existing right of way with.
And so there was no concern for fire, from the fire department? Or if we had a snow department, where the snow would go, presumably in the cul-de-sac?
So the road itself, the physical road itself is not any narrower. It's just the right of way itself. It's, is what is going to be narrower on that. So, no. So yeah, the physical driving space you see is going to be the same and it's not narrower.
Okay. And last thing, to length tick this line, one question for planners, and just correct me if I got this wrong. I thought in the memo, there's a reference to an existing HOA taking over. Did I misread that? Okay, what is this? What was the HOA status?
It will be creating a new age.
A new HOA.
Yes, it'll, a, a new HOA for these 50 lots.
For the 50 lots? Okay, for all of them.
Yeah, we're, we wouldn't be allowed to be annexed into the existing HOA.
And finally, and I don't mean to be snarky, but I just heard you say this. You said the prairie dogs would go to a ferret preserve?
That is what happens with, with live capture.
It's not going to end well for the prairie dogs in a ferret preserve, but I just wanted to make sure. It doesn't end well necessarily when you do relocate prairie dogs. Broomfield has a very active prairie dog relocation program and it generally, if we have space, it can go to the Great Lakes or the Great Reservoir or it goes to a raptor preserve, which has the equally negative outcome. So just so you know, that's sort of how it comes out. Thank you.
We would be open to relocating them anywhere that would take them.
If we have space, we can typically do it, but I think under state law and Kirsten's back there, I think we have to keep it within the county if they're live, I believe. So you can correct me later if I'm wrong. Thank you.
All right, is that all? Councilmember? All right. Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question for the developer, just one question really. Explain to me the, the $800,000 price point for your, most of your homes. That is significantly higher than what is existing in the area. And it's well over probably 75% of our median income. So explain to me the rationale behind the, that's such high price for a house.
Well, I ended, looking at the neighborhoods to the north and south, as you heard one person say that spoke, it's an 800 square foot house. When, when you're looking at a 25 to 2800 square foot house, obviously just you look at a price per square foot, you're going to have a little bit higher price. That is also just based on what our current, our competitive market analysis of what similar homes in this area are selling for. So that similar new homes in similar new home developments, what those homes sell for. There is also a resale component to it, but the resale component, as it lays out on a graph, we would be on a trend line with the, with the resale. But the resale has a big, it's a big scatter graph with, you know, resale prices all over the place. Yeah, I mean, in addition, as we mentioned with construction standards, we, we're going to adhere to new energy codes. We'll have sprinklers. We'll have, it's a difference of a new house versus a home built in the 1970s.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Winn?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the applicant for being here, developers, staff, and of course the community for being here and giving your voice and your thoughts. My questions are, one, the land use review commission, or known as LURC, voted 5 to 2 against it. I mean, clearly there's some pushback here. Do you have any thoughts or comments on LURC's position?
So I would say it was probably just a little confusing for us because I know we answered questions and then there was no further discussion after that. There was a vote, so I wouldn't say we really got some definitive answers on it. I know there was a lot of mention too, they were, I think, a little overwhelmed by the number of people, just like you have here tonight. There was, you know, they repeated a few times about how they're just, you know, volunteers doing this. So not to degrade or go against, you know, what they said, but I think there was also a little bit of a intimidation factor and I get it, right? There's definitely a lot of the community and I think in the end, they're listening to the community. And so that's what they heard, just like you're hearing here tonight, compared to some of the criteria we'll say in your code and standards.
Thank you. And my next question is, it was mentioned briefly that if we would deny this, that, you know, any further development of this project or property would basically go down the drain, so to speak. So I'm going to bring up this. How long would, what would the timeline be if we, in theory, would support this proposal?
The timeline for?
Uh, this project, this, how long would it take to go, you know, build and all these units?
So we still would have to complete our, our construction documents, correct? And, and work through that, then that's probably another three months. And then we have construction would start. We have likely a couple of months of grading. I'll shortcut it. It's roughly 12 to 18 months from now before we, before we'd start to sell houses. So roughly 12 to 18 months before we'd start to construct models and start to open the community for sale. And then 40 houses in a, in a strong market, stronger than today, would typically take a year and a half to two years to build out.
Yeah. And, you know, right now there's a lot of concern with the housing market. I do, you know, agree with the sentiment that there is a housing crisis. And I think that right now, my next question is, what would, ah, you know, obviously, yes, we have to go through the first hurdle here, but there are, there's concerns on council, at least for me at least, with, you know, tariffs, the possibility that there might be issues. Would that create a potential drawback? Like, you know, if, if the housing market would have some uncertainty in the next few months, even next year, would that create a potentially that you would draw and not make and complete these homes?
There's always the potential for, for something like that, of course. Currently, the housing market hasn't seen a, a ton of increase due to tariffs. That's not to say it's not coming, but we, we just haven't seen it yet. So that's, everything is being underwritten at current pricing, current guidelines. So all of, everything is being underwritten to that current. And, you know, should it go forward, we expect the market to improve. If it doesn't improve, we're just going to continue to see less housing. It's, I, I don't know how else to, to, to say that, but there's, it's currently pretty rough on, on housing right now.
Absolutely. I really appreciate the comments. And I guess my last question now is going to be, so with the, you know, TriPoint has a lot of experience, 800,000 homes, as you mentioned. What experience have you had with homes and I guess units in Colorado?
We, we've closed just over 2,000 units in Colorado over the last 13 years. So we, we've been here since 2012. One of our first communities, it was in Casa Rock, built this product. So this is a, you know, proven product for us. It's one that we've had, we've had a lot of experience with. We've built a, a good number of.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your answers, the questions. I know they're a bit tough. So thank you, Mayor. Those are my questions. I use my, use my time.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim?
I have one question for the applicant and I think it would be two for the staff. In your letter in response to the Lurk decision, it says that you are working with staff to place stop signs outside the project. Can you explain that and describe how you think that would help?
Yes, ma'am. That was, that was a comment that came out of the Lurk hearing, that there was a quest for a stop sign at Misty and Briarwood. That, that was a, that was a, you know, citizen question on whether we add a stop sign there. We would absolutely be open to adding a stop sign there. However, we worked with traffic engineering here and our traffic engineer, the intersection doesn't warrant a stop sign. So it wouldn't, it, it would be, I'm told, it would be ill-advised to add a stop sign when there aren't warrants for it.
Yes, I understand, we don't do that. I followed the traffic stipulations on that before. Okay, I think these are for staff. Could, there were references in the public comments to needing eleven variances. And um, could you please review the number of variances that this project needs at this point?
Thank you, council member Lim, Judy Hammer, representing the planning department. Based on the recent approval of ordinance number twenty-two seventy-five for the R-three zone district, those variances were reduced from what the LURC reviewed to what you saw in the staff report.
So is it, is then that, it is the case that when LURC reviewed this project, that twenty-two seventy-five was a?
Was not approved.
Was not approved yet. So the number of variances?
Were more.
Were more. And what we're looking at now, um, with the consideration of council, is that we are under the new zoning code.
Correct.
For our review.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The other, the other question I think that wasn't addressed yet, there were a lot of residents' concerns about the utilities, um, and the infrastructure not being equipped to handle the increased demand for the project. So, I mean, knowing that um, we do have a lot of concerns about infrastructure and maintenance that have arisen, I would appreciate staff addressing those resident concerns. And this is, I'm sure it was reviewed, but I would appreciate those being addressed.
Oh, yeah, sure. So uh, with respect to the utilities, and we're talking about dry and wet utilities, correct?
Yes.
Well, during the referral review, we uh, contact referral agents that provide those services, such, such as Excel Energy, to make sure that they can accommodate the additional capacity that will be needed to power up these homes. In addition, of course, they also have to uh, you know, get uh, tie-ins to the existing water and sewer lines and extend those throughout the development.
Okay. There were, there was also an, an comment on capacity of the water system to um, meet the needs of this development. So if you can comment on that.
I will defer this to Matthew Dever.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim, City Council, Matthew Dever, city and county engineer. So part of the utility report that's required for every development, they provide a, a utility model for both water and then calculations for sanitary sewer. We tie that model into our master water model and review that with our consultant to confirm that we have adequate capacity. Public Works also reviews it to confirm the same thing. So we, we do believe the existing infrastructure has capacity.
Thank you, those are my remaining questions.
All right, thank you, council member Ward.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I guess my, my big question for you all is um, knowing that our largest growing population, not only in the state of Colorado, but Broomfield, is our senior population, with many of whom are looking for properties to downsize. Why? Why did you feel that this development type was the appropriate market to target? Cause I mean, you have, you have a multi-story, from the pictures, you have two-story homes, large, I think two-car garage is what was depicted there. And if I remember hearing correctly, the home itself is twenty-five to twenty-eight hundred square feet.
I think we're nineteen oh six to twenty-six eighty-four.
Okay, so some, somewhere in there. I tried to find the present material and I couldn't find it.
Sure.
But I postulate that question to you.
Yeah, this wasn't, uh, we just didn't look at this community as a, as an acrid adult community, similar to, you know, something like an anthem, uh, that'd be wonderful. I do agree, we've heard from many um, city council members and, and different staff across the metro area of uh, that there's a, there's a need for that. This just didn't lend itself, we would have to have much bigger lots, um, to provide ranches. The, a ranch has to be deeper. And it would be, it, it's just, we just didn't consider it for this property. It didn't lend itself to this, the, the size of the property didn't lend itself to that.
Okay, um, I'd push back on that, but we don't have time for that tonight. My next question is for, um, for staff, I think. In the memo, uh, staff notates that there were, I think, at least three attempts, uh, two thousand three, two thousand eight, and twenty sixteen, by um, our open space department to try and acquire the property, have conversations, at least, and they were unsuccessful. Additionally, it notates that even though this part, these parcels are zoned for residential, there is still a, some quote-unquote net loss from the long-range financial plan consideration. If um, this were to not go through and we were to try again to have those conversations about acquiring at least the eastern parcel for open spaces, was noted in the pre- um, packet, what kind of negative fiscal impact would that create compared to putting homes on there?
Council member Ward, appreciate the question and clarification. And uh, staff and council have been having this conversation um, over the last three years repeatedly. And that is residents cost us dollars. And so anytime that we add um, a rooftop, as we're coming into our twenty-twenty-six budget, it's not just the infrastructure costs, it's not just the capacity costs, or just because you have the capacity, infrastructure and maintenance as uh, as it continues, um, is a cost. When you put a resident uh, or a residential unit, in this case, single family, we know that primarily a single-family home costs, from a service level perspective in Broomfield, about a, a little over four thousand dollars. The property taxes, although a lot of folks think that we keep all the property taxes, because it says city and county of Broomfield, we keep about twenty-five percent um, of those. We also know um, that that delta between the cost of a single-family home and the services is made up for in commercial. So the fact that this is not zoned commercial and we're converting to residential, but it's residential now, that net impact, um, there wouldn't be a net impact from a financial perspective, unless the homes were put on this property and therefore increasing the level of service demand. Um, and not, not only from an infrastructure perspective, right? But on all of the other services. So it's, it's that ongoing conversation of, of, of trade-offs, um, particularly with, with, with density. So would we be re-engaging in conversations about that property in the open space? Uh, if council directs that, that's the direction that we would, um, we would go in, yes.
Okay, I mean, I guess, just to kind of piggyback off that, there's still a cost to us if we acquire it as open space. There's the fiscal, there's the actual cost of purchasing the property, and there's the maintenance costs associated with maintaining that, building trails, maintaining those trails, correct?
Correct.
Have we identified kind of preliminary estimates of what those annual costs would be?
To give, um, just as a point of reference, um, um, CCOB just purchased the Miller property. Uh, the Miller property, it was a, just a little over uh, eight million dollars. So um, from a market rate, because you can't, you, you have to pay on market rate, because the, the developers anticipating making dollars back, um, it was about eighty-six thousand dollars per acre. So if we're looking at eleven acres, um, actually, um, I was asking these very specific questions when we were looking at uh, what that would, uh, what that would generate. So um, I, like council member Cohen, am not a mathematician. But if you take the Miller property, which was about twenty-eight acres, divided in half, uh, you'd be looking at about a four, four-point-two million dollar purchase. And then to your point, um, anything that would have to go in addition to that would, would have to be put in the um, in the uh, in the CIP plan. But again, to the point of, um, Broomfield pays uh, an additional mill levy for our open space in order to get to that forty percent. So those dollars will not come out of general fund, council member Ward. Those dollars would come out of the open space um, fund that, that we have been building over the last twenty-five years.
Thank you. I think those are all my questions for right now, Mayor.
All right, thank you, council member Henkel.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming back with less density and listening to people, um, and more connectivity. I will say that I also am thankful that people are coming out, because they are in your backyard. We do have infill projects that come in, uh, we've had many of them in Broomfield. And always the number one concern is traffic, but that is why we do have traffic engineers. I do want to push back a little bit on, you know, this idea that, that traffic engineers are there to make money.
Member Henkel, this is the question portion.
Correct.
Okay.
So knowing that, and we have more connectivity, um, we will have more traffic, obviously, it's sustainable. My question for you then is, for this traffic, and you guys are gonna be responsible for, for this build-out, is this a metro district, or that's through the HOA to pay for that?
It is not a metro district. The streets are generally, in, in general, public, correct? And it, with the exception of the connection to Little Boulevard, which would be private, and that would be an HOA responsibility.
Okay. And then the HOA would have electeds from people who lived in that area, correct?
Yes, in the fifty.
Okay.
In the fifty units we're proposing.
Okay, thank you. And then this last question I have for you is, I just have issues with the, the key issues that we have from staff, with the five-foot drainage easement agreement. At the very end of that statement, it just says the fully executed easement should be secured by the developer. What does should be secured by the developer mean? And what does the timeline look like if it is approved?
Thank you for the question regarding the easement. That means that we would not record the final plat until we have a copy of that recorded easement. So there's a spot on the final plat for that seven-lot subdivision with a label that says recorded at reception number for that five-foot easement. And until we have that copy of that recorded document, we would not record the final plat.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions for this evening.
Thank you. Real quick on that, um, excuse me one second, council member Anderson. The staff is recommending that amendment, a, a conditional approval, but it's not in the ordinance. So that's kind of odd to me. I've never seen something like this where staff is recommending approval with the condition of the drainage easement. But it's not part of the resolution. Why are we being asked to um, conditionally approve?
Mayor, it is, it's in section two on page three of the resolution. So it's been incorporated in the proposed resolution, uh, that's up for council's consideration. So the motion to approve um, twenty-two-five-one-thirteen is written, would include that condition right now.
Even though it doesn't say it?
It doesn't say it in the resolution. It says, um, you can read it. That's where I'm confused. It's written at the top of the memo, like it, it need, we need to, it could be approved on this condition. Staff recommends.
Just feel. Let me get back to you on that, and we can continue with.
I just want to make sure that it's clear. But in the meantime, we'll go to council member Anderson.
Okay, thank you. Actually, that was, my first question was also related to this easement. And um, I'm just curious if there's no guarantee that that easement is going to be secured. So then, does that, would that mean, I don't know if this is a question for staff or developer, but would the trails at Westlake still go forward and the other seven homes just never go forward? Or are they contingent upon each other?
Thank you for that question. That would be up to the developer, whether or not they would move forward with the forty-three lots without the seven lots.
Okay.
So they're separate plats, separate site plans. They could theoretically be developed separately, but we considered this altogether as one development. So.
Guess what I'm wondering is, why would we not just wait for that agreement to be secured and then move forward? Is there a reason why we're doing it this way?
Because um, I'll let the developer and property owner address that part of the question, if that's okay?
That is okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, council, thank you. That question goes all the way back to uh, twenty-sixteen, when we started the uh, process of the seven-lot subdivision with the house to the east. And we went through the processes and went before council and had that approved with the deed split at that time. So part of that process with the homeowners is, we did disclose the easement. And we had an agreement that was signed that's part of this process tonight. So we are in talks with the uh, owners to the east with the easement. And I think Troy Denning can kind of help us out with, one of the requests with the processes was an extra five feet for a utility.
Excuse me, sir, could you just identify yourself for the record?
Sure, Mark D. Benedictus with Remax.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Troy Denning, um, nine-seven-seven, Kermit Court, week one fifty Inglewood. I'm the president of Action Civil Engineering and engineer record for this project. And I have a nice little exhibit that I could show you all to clarify everything. Oh, it's, it's in our supplement slides. Yeah. Councilor, the, I might yell off section like this.
You want us to bring up a certain slide? Can we please bring up the presentation? Thank you.
Uh, this would be good enough. So over here on the seven-lot subdivision, you see where the detention pond is? So that pipe is gonna go out of the pond and down the trail to the west, or to the east, sorry, and connect to Misty Court, and then it's gonna go north and connect into the existing storm sewer that ends at the intersection of Misty Street and Misty Court. And right now, that, that trail area is owned by this city and county of Broomfield, and it's fifteen feet wide. The current standard for a drainage easement is twenty feet, so we need an additional five feet. And so we've been talking to the lot two owner about uh, acquiring that additional five feet for that easement. If that doesn't go through, then we just take the pipe out the other way, that Misty Street, to the public right of way. So there's other options. This is just the simplest option. And prior to now, this, for, we haven't had any pushback or any, we haven't heard anything from lot two owner saying that they, we're not going to give us that easement. That's why, it's a simple.
Oh, no, it's not really a proper time, but.
So I was understanding that we were working with the homeowner to get that five-foot easement. We haven't heard any thing from them, at least I haven't up to this point, saying they were not going to grant us that easement. And if it doesn't go that way, then we just, like I said, we just take the pipe from the pond, back out to Misty Drive, up to Misty Street, back out to the intersection of Misty Court, Misty Street. It's just a longer route, and uh, we tear it more street to put it in.
Okay, um, that's helpful. Okay, so, so I guess that this is a question for the, the developer then, is if, if you, okay, so if you. Okay, that's helpful. Okay, so so I guess that this is a question for the the developer then is if if you, okay, so if you can't get that easement from the homeowner. Who spoke tonight and is clearly stated that that is. That there is an issue there, then would you just move forward with the trails at Westlake and just forget that, or would you, you would then come back to console? And ask for a different agreement? And I'm just curious why we don't just figure this out before we approve it. I I guess I'll late. See if I make, you can respond to that and I'll see if my colleagues have any question.
Sure, as Troy said, if if we're not able to get the easement to take the short route, we'll go back to the west. Through Broomfield property and farm at Westlake property or through our property. Get into Misty Street, then you're into right of way and we'll go back. It's just a longer, it's just a longer way that causes a bigger interruption on Misty Street. So there is an alternative routing for this pipe that doesn't require an easement. So should the easement not be granted by the property owner, we would pursue the the other routing of the pipe that wouldn't require an easement and and still continue with the seven lot.
And I would need to go back to the language that we're, the conditional approval, maybe maybe our staff can respond to that right now. Does that still meet the conditional approval?
Yeah, I wanted to get back to Ms. Rogers or Ms. Hoffman to clarify the confusion that I I had, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple points. When staff prepares a proposed resolution, staff isn't recommending approval of the project. But the way we write up the resolutions for council's consideration is to incorporate any additional considerations that staff thinks is important if. Council should decide to approve the development. In this case, that easement agreement is an important enough condition that staff said if council's inclined to approve it. Staff would recommend including that easement requirement, which is why that one is already incorporated into the resolution.
It's in there.
Does that cover both both scenarios of the easement?
It it doesn't. It covers the, it it covers that there will be a five-foot drainage easement agreement by and between the developer and the property owner. Of Westlake Farms filing number one, replat A lot two. So that's what, that's what the condition is, that they they have to get that agreement.
So they would have to come back before console and ask for a different agreement if they can't get that agreement. That's correct. Okay. All right. And then, okay, so that I'll leave it at that for now. That is a little bit on the confusing side.
I'm sorry. Anthony files Terasina, I'm a planner on the project. To simplify it, the easement has to happen for that storm pipe to go through. The problem is, you can't record it against a property until the plat's done. So if the project doesn't go through, we'd encumber that lot with an easement that's not needed. So once the project is approved, we'd get the easement recorded. And then it would cumber that lot with a new easement to allow our pipe to go through their property. But it's more of a timing issue, that the easement can't be in place. Until the property is approved, or it doesn't have to happen if the property is not approved to for the development as it is.
Okay.
That did not simplify it, I guess. But it has to happen for the development to happen, but it has to happen after the plat's. Been approved.
It's a chicken or an egg type of situation, Councilmember Anderson. I mean, we could have tried to figure this out before the development application went through, but. I I would agree at this time, so we're addressing the development now with this condition on the easement.
Okay. Think about that for me, but thank you. So I so I have a completely different question. The other question I have is. On North Metro's approval, saying that this is, this is acceptable, did they raise any specific concern about the length of this cul-de-sac? Do we have that information? Or is this, is this a completely acceptable length from their standpoint?
During the referral review, the North Metro Fire worked closely with this applicant to make sure that the design of this road, including the cul-de-sac, was acceptable to them. They had to revise it a little bit from the first iteration of their review. So they are fine with this at this point.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all my questions for now.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council? No more questions? Okay, well, my questions have been answered at this point. So there being no further questions, the public hearing is closed. Next is council's consideration of proposed resolution number twenty-two-five-one-one-three. Before we start, the city and county attorney wanted to address the next step. City and county attorney Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. So the next step in this process, now that the public hearing is closed, so the council has received all the information. Through all the written documentation, all the public comment, the presentations tonight, it's for council to consider and review and then vote on this application. This vote is based on the review standards that are in the code. As a reminder for council and to inform the residents who are here tonight, those review standards are listed at the last two pages of the staff memo. On page twenty-five and twenty-six, you'll see him that they're outlined. So those, those are the review standards. Those are the criteria that council uses when evaluating a land use application. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. So will the court please read the proposed resolution by title?
Seven C, proposed resolution number twenty-two-five-one-one-three, approving the trails at Westlake filing six planned unit development plan. Final plat, state site development plan and rezoning. And Westlake Farms filing number one replat B, planned unit development plan amendment, final plan and site development plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Winn?
I make this motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Delgado?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say at the outset that this is an infill project, and I think infills deserve extra scrutiny. Because by their nature, there's a change in use, which can be very disruptive, and as the code says, is a question of compatibility. And I was thinking about this infill related to the last infill we just considered, which was the Grove. Which was a development within an older established neighborhood. And we went forward with that one because for a number of factors. And it was a higher density infill, that there was already density in that neighborhood. There was a senior assisted living housing there. There was already a school, as well as a park with recreation fields. There was already a lot of activity. That would be in addition to the standard residential neighborhood, and this was a facility for adult IDD. So there was no real, in traffic impact, because none of the forty residents would be driving, and there'd be some limited transit. Comparing that to this one, this one's different. Because there is no existing density on this property, and I would ask my colleagues to consider this seriously. This would be introducing high density to an area that for forty, fifty years has not had any, the closest density is way down at Midway with Front Range Mobile Home and the apartments at the corner of Midway. So we'd be introducing a major change, an incompatible change. Traffic, I know everybody's saying capacity is low, but that's. Misrepresents the extremely low traffic that has existed on these residential streets since they've been built. So the traffic disruption would be substantial when you go from ten to thirty or so, and just that kind of change. The current aesthetic that residents now have been used to for decades would absolutely be changed if you're adding two hundred more cars to these streets. In addition, there is no access to an arterial. Unlike other housing developments, most of the housing developments we approve are on arterios. They're on US thirty-six, or Highway seven are near to them. And there isn't any traffic being delivered through existing neighborhoods. In this case, as I think one speaker addressed, it would go through one street that one long time was a dead-end street until Misty came along. On the other side, you would not have a direct route out to Westlake. You would have a circuitous route. It goes in a U shape through and past a lot of established homes. And that would increase disruption. So I see it as highly incompatible on those scores. The issue of density, the applicant represented that he's building density, one, because it's the only way to financially make it work. But to reflect what the needs are in the community. And we have been trying to promote housing. Because the reason these homes in this neighborhood have gone from three hundred fifty to over seven hundred in the last ten years is the high demand. But I wanted to remind you, we had a discussion in the last meeting about R-seven zoning where we approved a higher density zone. And there was a gentleman here concerned about where that would be and how that would impact residents, existing residents, and we talked about. How we would only approve an R-seven rezone where it's appropriate. We would, there are places where it's, there's places where we have just pushed for density along US thirty-six corridor, notably along the US Highway seven corridor. Because those places are appropriate, they have the infrastructure, there are arterios, and more specifically, there are transit hubs either already at US thirty-six and coming to Highway seven and nine twenty-five. We would never put R-seven on this spot, and I think even just additional density as proposed would not be appropriate on this spot because of it's, it's a thumb in the middle of an established neighborhood. Without direct access to arterial, no access to transit, not even close to that, and would impact established residential neighborhoods. The second point on density is that we don't need density in this spot. We need more homes, but we already have nine thousand homes already approved to be built in baseline and additional hundreds of homes along those two corridors in US thirty-six. We don't need these fifty homes in this spot to address our housing needs. We don't need five, five hundred thousand dollar homes to address our needs for housing. We have more than that planned in baseline in Ward five, and there's other proposals coming down on one thirty-sixth that have more homes than this. And we have seen proposals before on other properties in the area that have much more direct access to an arterial that so far haven't matured. So. I will not support this. I think there's, it simply does not meet the compatible, it's simply not compatible with this community, causes disruption to established residents. Who have bought in here for a reason. And have maintained this aesthetic in this community for forty to fifty years. And to disrupt that for merely fifty homes. With all these other problems associated with it, in addition to, there's not even space to mitigate for the trees. Some of the trees would go to a park a mile and a half away. So that's not helping these neighbors. I think there's just too many red flags. To approve this one, there are other projects where we can achieve our housing goals. And I think as Councilmember Ward appropriately noted, you know, adding homes has a cost. If there was, if it ever came up to be available for open space, we have the funds. That could be worked out if the owner was amenable to it. But I don't think making a decision to approve this now in this to somehow solve the current housing market, it wouldn't do that. And would just cause permanent harm. So I ask you to reflect on those thoughts, and I would encourage you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for everybody to come out tonight. Obviously, this is important to everyone. This is your neighborhood where you live, and for the developer, thank you for the proposal. Obviously, we understand that you want to build a quality product and and do what's best for your company and for the community. I have concerns about this this proposal, but let me start from this onset. It's not about density. I actually support density. I think we need more density in Broomfield. But as Councilmember Cohen just said, we have to talk about where density, and really, we're looking at this project. It's two different parcels. If you look back at the at the concept review, online concept review that council did for the eastern lot, I think it was a couple of years ago now, I left a comment on there. I propose that that should have been townhomes. That lot should have been more dense than it is currently proposed. The other lot, it's not. It doesn't, the density on that lot, just as Councilmember Cohen, just doesn't fit with the neighborhood. But my concern really isn't the density, it's the cost. The eight hundred thousand dollar price tag just doesn't fit with this neighborhood. I looked on one of the, you're looking at the homes for sale right now. The homes for sale in that, in that area, the average sale price is under six hundred thousand. Three hundred, thirty percent more, less, sorry, than what you are proposing for this development. We need townhomes in Broomfield, we need density in Broomfield, we don't need twenty-eight hundred square foot, single-family homes like this in that location. There are locations where it might be appropriate, this is not it. I just, you know, eight hundred thousand dollar home is two fifty that you'd have to earn to be able to afford that house. And you mentioned, when I mentioned in my my questions about the size of the home and the price of the home, and then Councilmember Ward mentioned, had a question about the size of the home. You look at the existing neighborhood, those houses are eight hundred, seventeen hundred, fifteen hundred square foot. Why not build, if you want the density, why not build fifteen hundred square foot houses? Why do you need twenty-eight hundred square foot houses in a neighborhood with fifteen hundred square foot houses? It just doesn't fit with the neighborhood. So I am not going to support this proposal tonight, and based on the review, beauty review standards, there are two, the seventeen thirty-eight one twenty C. Is the proposal should identify and mitigate potential negative impacts on nearby properties. I don't believe this fits that based on the traffic, based on the density. And then H, the land use uses within the plan should be compatible with one another and with the nearby properties. This proposal is not compatible with the nearby properties, and for those reasons, I will be opposing this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winn?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the reality for a lot of young folks, especially people of my age, is that we cannot afford a home. And I feel like even though it is only about four or five homes, that would be one hundred percent AMI. I think that is an important aspect of this proposal. And it might not seem much, but I think we still have to, you know, try to build more homes, more affordable homes, and of course. I generally do believe that there is a housing crisis, and if we are not going to be making, you know, more. If we're not going to be doing this with this project, then, you know. There's going to be a lot of issues in the future. I think that it's unfair that people my generation are basically. Suffering a lot of inequity, and unfortunately, that's just the reality, I guess. So I still support this. I still believe that we should build these homes, and I yield the rest of my time.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. I think one of the big concerns that I had mentioned was. Kind of the market this is trying to address. Our fastest growing population is our seniors who are looking to downsize. Up to twenty-six hundred square feet is not necessarily downsizing for a senior. And then the other kind of big market are missing middle, as is known, for those first-time home buyers who want to get into the market. But can't partially for a number of reasons. One. Many people are sitting in their homes longer because they can't downsize, and two, we've just restricted the amount of supply. On there or on the market, and then thirdly, one of the things we don't really get to control up here is incomes for individuals have not kept pace with. Housing prices specifically, particularly over the last fifty or so years. I think there are plenty of other housing types that could have been identified for this parcel. That would have at least targeted our senior population, for example, cottage cluster homes. I think would have been a great solution for having kind of the the density that either you need. But also we want up here, or at least I sort of say I want, and some of my colleagues want. But providing them that kind of smaller home size that's not necessarily that traditional ranch style that. Has plagued urban development for the past. Seventy years, to be quite frank. And has led to some of the issues we see with the housing market as it is now. Because of those reasons, I will not be supporting this particular project. I think there are other. Types of housing that can be looked at. To address our needs while also. Attempting to mitigate some of the either real and or perceived concerns that people have around new development in their existing communities. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion from my council colleagues? All right. Councilmember Anderson?
Okay, so I am still caught up on the on the how, since I I have a question as we move forward because the. Can we move forward with just the, with just the. Trails at Westlake and not the seven-home parcel and have the developer go back and. Work through that that piece on the easement, or I mean, is there a way to separate the two, or they have to be considered as one package?
Councilmember, Councilmember Anderson, the application has been submitted as one package. We could potentially take a break and see if the property owner would would be interested in that. I think if that's where you wanted to go. I think if that's where you wanted to go, my um advice would be denied this application with that instruction to the developer to return with an alternative rather than trying to do this from the dais tonight.
Okay, that's what I would like to do. I don't know if I have support from my colleagues, but that is my thought process. So I don't know if anybody has any response to that, but I would prefer to go that route.
All right, uh any other council discussion? All right, seeing none. Uh, council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
No.
Got it, okay. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That fails nine to one. Thank you all again.
Mayor.
Point of order.
Mayor.
Mayor. And if I could have the, just a moment, there is one more procedural aspect of this. So when council denies an application, we actually do a formal denial resolution and we'll need to put that on a future um council agenda. That's not rehearing this matter, that's just voting on, we took your comments tonight and we put them in a denial resolution and we'll bring back, bring that back to council for formal adoption, since we don't prepare denial resolutions before the hearing.
All right, does everybody understand that? Any questions for Ms. Rogers?
Uh we, we need to continue this to a date certain. So I don't know if uh Deputy Manager Burtonzetti, if you see a date that might be... So council knows and the public knows?
Yes, I'm waiting for a date, sir.
Hmm, we, we can, we don't need very long at all. Because again, it's not to reconsider the hearing, it's just to look at the wording of the resolution.
I understand.
Oh, October 14th. Thank you, technology. October 14th, we'll bring this back for that.
We have to vote on that or we just?
It is a vote, but again, it's not a rehearing of the application. It's, it's just a vote on the denial resolution.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
October 13th. Thank you all again for all of your engagement and thank you for your application and all of the work that you've done to that. All right, we have one more item, but if y'all want to go, you can. I think you've been hanging in here for many hours. All right, moving on to item 7D in the interest of time. The final item under action items this evening is the public hearing in council's consideration on second reading of our proposed ordinance related to accessory dwelling units. I'll now declare the public hearing open. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you. Mr. Harburg has been in the audience and knows the importance of brevity at this moment. Please close us out, Mr. Harburg.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. I'm Ted Harburg, Senior Planner. And the topic of this presentation is the second reading of the proposed accessory dwelling unit or ADU code updates. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and I will be brief. Uh next slide, please. This ordinance would update Broomfield's accessory dwelling unit requirements following city council direction from the 20, January 21st study session. The summary on the screen outlines the changes that would be made to the code by this ordinance. And uh we reviewed each of these in detail during the July 8th first reading for this ordinance and I will provide a brief overview only tonight. In summary, these changes would uh update some side setback requirements to remove the requirement for property uh and remove the requirement for property owner occupation. And this would bring Broomfield's code into full compliance with the recent state legislation. It would also update the terms manufactured homes and tiny homes and clean up other regulations for these structures to clarify that these may be used as ADUs. It would also remove references to familial relationships, generally replacing the term single family with single unit consistent with state requirements. Next slide. This slide outlines the previous actions that city council has taken related to this ordinance, uh including the dates of the study session and the first reading. I'll leave this on the screen for a moment so you can all read. Next slide. In conclusion, proposed ordinance number 2265 would update Title 17 of the Broomfield Municipal Code to revise the regulations for the construction of accessory dwelling units. If not amended in substance after second reading and approval by council, proposed ordinance number 2265 will be published in title and go into effect seven days after publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed with public comments. If anyone would like to be heard on this item, please make your way to the podium. How about council comments? Any questions from council? All right, then. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Lim.
Thank you. This is actually a question that a resident had. So um I'll preface it by saying I recognize that there's a statement in the original memo that um council is not, or staff did not suggest that we um change our existing ADU ordinance due to the state law because we believe this is a matter of um local control. But given that preface, um is this, does this ADU ordinance put us in compliance with the state? And if it does, have we investigated the possibility of using or applying for any state grant funding that opened? I found it's opened on August 1st.
Thank you for that question. Um yes, so the proposed code updates would put Broomfield's code in full compliance with the state, which would mean that we would be eligible as a ADU supportive jurisdiction. We had previously discussed this during the study session. Uh we did not receive direction to move forward. However, um becoming an ADU supportive jurisdiction really just requires a simple report. And uh we've decided it, it would be prudent to move forward with that. If we are in full compliance, um it really only takes a little bit of staff time to prepare that report and submit it. And there may be divisions within the city uh that would want to apply for that grant funding.
Ms. Burtonzetti.
Thank you, Ted. I'm just going to add on a little bit. Anna Burtonzetti, Deputy City and County Manager. Um the grant conversation actually did come up um and was discussed in detail with our Economic Vitality, um the Housing Division. And they considered it, there is a requirement for matching. And given the, the current fiscal constraints, um we're trying not to do additional new programs. So that is not something that we're bringing forward. Um also, we had concerns with the eligibility for um doing some of the programs through the grant because of how many units um we have approved. Some of the eligibility requirements um looked back to prior years and how many units had been approved in the jurisdiction. And we had so few units approved that the amount of money that we would be provided through the grant um just wasn't going to work.
Okay, okay, thank you. That addresses the question fully. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other council questions? Seeing no further questions, the public hearing is closed. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2265. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2265 to amend the Broomfield Municipal Code, Title 17, to revise the regulations for accessory dwelling units.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on second and final reading and order it published by title? Councilmember Ward.
I moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Question, no? Okay. Uh seeing no discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2265. Council, please cast your vote electronically. And Councilmember Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have gotten their vote in and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously, 10 to 0. Thank you both very much for putting this one to bed. There are no mayor or council member, did you have something to say? Oh, okay. Okay, there are no mayor or council member requests for future action this evening. Is there any other business to come before the council from my colleagues or staff? All right, seeing none.